Hi, everyone. Welcome. Good evening. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this adjourned meeting of the city council and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano is absent. Gordon is absent. Kano is absent. Reich.
Present.
Fletcher.
Present.
Jenkins is absent. Schrader.
Here.
Orsami.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
We have eight members present.
With the record, we reflect that we have a quorum. I expect councilmembers to be coming in and joining us as the hearing goes on, and I would like to welcome Mayor Frye, who's joined us as well. So, we need to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and our agenda is adopted. Tonight, we have a number of elected officials in the room, so I will scan, because I just walked in. Do we have bookboard members? We have Superintendent Ed Graff here from the school district. If I'm missing anyone, I apologize, but it looks like Superintendent Graff is here, and of course Mayor Frye as well. So, I just want to give a little brief introduction to tonight's hearing, and then be brief so that we can move right into hearing from all of you. So, a little over two weeks ago, on November 15th, Hennepin County mailed out a proposed property tax notice to property owners to identify the potential property tax impact, tax impact based on the 2019 budget proposed by Mayor Frye. So, tonight's hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on that proposed budget, in part based on information that was included in the property tax notices from Hennepin County, as well as information made available by the city. A copy of the recommended budget is posted on the city's website, and a full printed copy is available here in person tonight with the city clerk. The city council's budget committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano, has conducted hearings on each department's budget request over the past several weeks, presentations by the budget by each department, all of which were broadcast on public television as well as the city's website. And all documentation related to those, the proposed budget is also posted and available from the city's website. And so, before I open the hearing, I want to let everyone know that we will take speakers in the order that folks are registered. If you haven't signed in yet, I would encourage you to do so now. Speaker sign-in table is in the hallway just outside the chamber, and there's overflow seating in Room 319 just across the hall for anyone who needs a seat there. And again, we are broadcasting this live on what my children call mommy TV, but on Minneapolis television they're watching right now. Hi, girls. So, to begin, I will recognize our budget director, who will provide an overview of the proposed budget. And actually, it'll be Mr. Intermill. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the council, Mayor Frye, please to present a brief overview for you. For the record, my name is Mica Intermill, the city's budget director. So, as a reminder, the 2019 city budget excluding the independent boards is $1.55 billion. All ongoing spending is supported by ongoing revenues. One-time spending uses one-time revenues or available fund balances, so our budget is structurally balanced. In total, the 2019 budget as proposed is $140 million, greater roughly 10% more than the 2018 adopted budget. And the major drivers of these costs are $100 million investment in the new public service center across the street, as well as a $30 million one-time investment in affordable As a reminder, the mayor's recommended budget proposes a total increase to the property tax levy of 5.63%. During the budget process, the Minneapolis Park Board asked the Board of Estimate and Taxation to increase that maximum levy increase to 5.67%, and with support from the city members of the board, that 5.67% maximum levy increase was adopted. This does not include levies from the school board or the county. Just a brief overview of the major changes included in the mayor's proposed budget. Certainly, the most discussed item to date is the affordable housing investment of $40 million of local sources, plus an additional $10 million in federal pass-through dollars. In addition, the mayor's budget invests in an interdisciplinary approach to public safety through investments not only in the police department, but initiatives like group violence intervention and the NEXUP program in the health department, items to advanced economic inclusion, in particular, investing in the Village Trust Financial Cooperative on the north side, as well as some supplier diversity efforts here at the city. And finally, some improved operations in city services, which we don't often talk about, but these are important things to make sure that the dollars we're spending are doing the most good for everybody here in the room and watching at home. So, each property tax dollar goes to support roughly, you know, 21 cents out of every dollar supports the parks, a similar amount supports the police department. 14% of that dollar goes to support capital and debt service, 7% to support the city's pension obligations, 7% for fire, another 7% for our transportation maintenance, infrastructure through Public Works, and the remaining 21% goes for general city services. The impacts of the mayor's recommended 5.63% levy increase on the, on that median-valued home are, as the median-valued home has increased by $24,000 from tax year 2018 to 2019, it's about a 10%, 10% to 11% increase in the value. The property tax is seeing an increase of $87 on that home, which is an increase of between 6% and 7%. Put a different way, if a home's value did not increase from taxes payable year 2018 to taxes payable year 2019, through the mayor's recommended budget, they would see a decrease to that property tax bill. And that really just speaks to the growth in the market value here in the city of Minneapolis. Finally, as we talk about property taxes and the impacts thereof, it's particularly with so many people here in the audience today, those watching at home, I want to take an opportunity just to remind everybody of the property tax refund program through the state of Minnesota. This is a great program that is available not only for homeowners who pay property taxes directly, but also for renters who are indeed paying some property tax through the rent that they pay. It is income limited, so there are phase-outs, but these property tax refunds and renters' tax refunds can often be in the hundreds, not tens, so I encourage you to, encourage your residents to either visit the website here on this slide, or just simply Google "Minnesota property tax refund," and that will get them the right information through the, the state of Minnesota Department of Revenue. With that, I promise to be brief. I rarely achieve that. Happy to stand for questions or yield the floor to the rest of my fellow Minneapolitans.
Thank you, Mr. Intermill. And I just want to note that we also have our city assessor here, Patrick Todd, in the audience. So, if anyone has questions about their individual property tax assessment, he is available to you tonight and going forward as well. So, we need to suspend our rules, because our city council rules typically do not allow for public testimony, so I will move to suspend the rules to allow members of the public to address the city council. Is there a second?
Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that carries, and the rule has been suspended. So, just again, really briefly how we'll run tonight's meeting. We'll take speakers in the order that they're registered, so please go ahead and register if you haven't yet. And if you have any materials that you want us to see past what you're saying, or if you run out of time, you can give anything written to the clerk, and we'll submit it as part of the public record. And if you don't want to speak, but you're here tonight and want to give voice to recommend the ideas about the recommended budget, we also have comment forms outside in the hallway if you prefer to give your comments that way. And of course, you can always contact your council member as well. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council. We use the time limit not to make you feel stressed out about speaking, but rather to make sure everyone has a chance. So, if the beeper goes off and you're not done, please feel free to continue your sentence, but please wrap up. So, we want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak and be heard. And I also really always ask people to remember that we come from lots of different parts of the city, lots of different life experiences, and to please refrain from making any kind of comment about someone, someone as they're speaking or interrupting while they're speaking. And that is all we have to say. So, again, we're ready to open the public hearing, and I will start with speaker number one, Scott. Then we'll have Candace, and then Mr. Graff. Scott Engel. Okay? And if we miss you, we will come back to you if you come back. So Candace would be first.
Hi. Thank you. My name's Candace Montgomery. I live at 3636 Park Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm an organizer with Black Visions Collective and as well part of Reclaim the Block Coalition. And what I'd like to say is, this year, we have an opportunity to transform the lives of thousands. MPD has shown us how they do business. They've had 150 years to build trust with our communities, and they haven't done it yet. Let's stop putting money, our money into a model that is built to kill us. Just this year, we found out that MPD has been drugging people with ketamine. MPD murdered Thurman Blevins after chasing him through North Minneapolis, when Travis Jordan was experiencing a mental health crisis. MPD arrived on the scene and shot and killed him. We are tired of our tax dollars funding cover-ups and PR campaigns, while the things that really keep our communities safe, housing, drug treatment, healthcare, we have to literally beg for crumbs for year after year. There's nothing progressive about a mayor or a city council that continues to waste millions in a system of policing we know is violent, instead of investing and listening to their community and constituents. We are here today to call on those who have elected to be our leaders to lead, to be bold and care about their people more than their political careers. Reclaim the Block is here to demand that the city council, one, does not civilianize sworn positions in order to put more police on the streets, and instead, move that $1 million into the Office of Violence and Prevention. Two, do not give the police more money to manage their image through Community and Collaborative Advancement Unit, and move $6 million into ongoing funds for affordable housing. And three, divest 5% from the MPD's budget and put that money into organizations that promote real community safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graff? Then we'll go to speaker four, David. Five, Rick. And six, Ezra.
Good evening, President Bender, Mayor Frye, council members. Thank you for allowing me to testify this evening. My name is Ed Graff. I'm superintendent of Minneapolis Public Schools. I want to begin this evening by first thanking all of you for your ongoing support and partnership with Minneapolis Public Schools. Grateful for the continued partnership that we have in support of our great city and our kids, and look forward to continuing that partnership with all of you. Tonight, I'm here to express my strong support for the proposed Stable Homes, Stable Schools program. I appreciate Mayor Frye for his leadership on this important issue of student homelessness. As many of you know, we have thousands of students in Minneapolis Public Schools who experience homelessness at some point during the school year. In fact, it's about 8% of our population of students who experience some level of homelessness during their school year. Research has shown that even a single episode of homelessness has a significant negative impact on the students' well-being, as well as their academic experience and outcomes. The program, Stable Homes, Stable Schools, would significantly address one of the most consequential out-of-school factors by providing much-needed housing stability and services. It would target the support of 15 Minneapolis Public Schools with high concentrations of homelessness. Again, I believe this is a very strong partnership opportunity we have to provide those supports that are needed for many of our students who are experiencing a large disruption with instability in housing and homelessness. So, I appreciate our continued collaboration and partnership, and I thank you for allowing me to support this program this evening, and look forward to your considerations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker four, David. Then Rich, Ezra, and Judith.
Hello. My name is David Peterson. We have to stop the violence. From the beginning of time, it's been common knowledge, violence only begets more violence. You have to put a stop in it somewhere. Spending more money to create more problems is not going to cut it. You need to, you are the ones that have the power, that have the control of the purse springs, to stop the fear-based training, this bulletproof warrior. Put in some de-escalation. If these officers are not capable of dealing with mental problems and the mental things, then they need to be able to step back and let the mental health people deal with the real problems, instead of using the gun. As being one of the victims of the excessive violence on a repetitive basis from the police, and being injected with these chemicals, you can't call it a study when there's no follow-up to even find out what's going on. The extreme violent nightmares, the problems, the police walking out of the wall at me when they're not there, because of the comebacks from these drugs that have been injected into me against my will. At what point do we start protecting the public instead of obscuring the problem? You need to come back and help these homeless people. If you're going to spend this kind of money on the police, then spend the same amount on dealing with the problem, of dealing with the homelessness, and dealing with the violence of this. Not one person that has been injected with any of this stuff has been notified of what the problems are and what the after-effects are of this. You have the money, you have the power, you have the signature. Use that to put the money where it's supposed to be, and protect the public and not the special interests.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaker five, Rich. Then Ezra, Judith, and Jim. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Rick Zimmerman. I've been a resident in Loring Park for 35 years, and I work, my councilmember is the esteemed Lisa Goodman. I have brothers and sisters that live in North Minneapolis, nieces and nephews, and I'm also, I've been a police officer for 35 years with Minneapolis. And I just wanted to state my opposition to reducing the budget that Mayor Frye has proposed, and to actually increase the budget for the police. I know that might come as a shock to some, but, you know, in my time in Minneapolis, I've worked with councilmember Goodman to reduce crime in Loring Park. I've worked with community members in Loring Park. I've worked with others throughout the community in my assignment, which for the last 23 years has been in homicide. And homicides from when I started there in 1995 are less than a third of what they were. And domestic murders are down, child murders are down from what they were in the mid-'90s. Gang murders are actually down compared to what they were, if you all recall back in the mid-'90s and later '90s. And the reason for that, I believe, is the police officers working with the community, working in PALE, making that connection with kids. Coach Adams, who works at North High for PALE, and is also North High's football coach, who, you know, did a great job this year, again, with the team. But more than that, he's someone the kids look up to and respect and admire. And by having more officers like that, that reflect the city, officers of color, female officers, having more officers like that, Mayor, is going to help the community become safer. And I just want you all to remember, I'm just one cop that lives in the city, I'm sure there's others, but we're a part of the community. We're not just a bunch of warriors that come in and go home to someplace in the suburb. We're a part of this community, and I think increasing the budget more than what it is would be more helpful.
Thank you.
But at least, I would oppose what's being recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number six is Ezra. Then seven is Judith. Eight, Jim. Nine is a repeat.
Okay. My name is Ezra. I'm a resident of Stevens Square. I'm a member of Twin Cities Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm here in solidarity with Reclaim the Block and Defend Glendale Public Housing Coalition. I think the priorities in this budget, especially around housing, are very skewed. I am always a supporter of more funding for housing, but right now, under your leadership, we are seeing a massive drive to privatize Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, which is in the top 98th percentile of quality public housing, and they are doing this because of a manufactured crisis of capital funding. Currently, you know, if you took the, if you used your discretion to reinstate the $8 million levy that was rescinded a few years ago, it would, with other sources of funding, would more than cover up any sort of supposed shortfalls. Currently, the head of MPHA, Greg Russ, his family owns one of the largest tax credit, low-income tax credit developers in the state. A clear conflict of interest, which while they are accountable to HUD, there's also a strong community control element, that you, I feel, city council and the mayor, are in gross dereliction of their duties while having a fox oversee the hen house. The public housing is the backbone of any affordable housing policy, because rather than being based on area median income, which in an affluent, you know, city like ours is very high, but in an also very segregated city like ours, you know, cuts out large parts of the population, you know, public housing is based on one's income. We need to expand, to properly fund maintenance and greatly expand our public housing system in Minneapolis, and that is entirely within your discretion. It is not, you can't, you can't just punt this to HUD. And, you know, the private housing market cannot and will not provide affordable housing for working people in this state. It is not how capitalism works. You know, there's this whole idea of sortition. Oh, well, luxury housing today will be affordable housing 30 years from now. People don't have 30 years to wait.
Thank you. Speaker seven, Judith? Welcome. No problem.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Judith Healy. I represent actually myself tonight. It's a little embarrassing after listening to these very important issues, but this is an important issue too. My property taxes have gone up $1,000 in the last two years. I've been a Minneapolis property owner with my husband, who has now passed away, for almost 60 years, three different houses. We raised our kids in South Minneapolis. They all came back and lived in South Minneapolis. I see my grandchildren all the time. So, my question is, this is a little unsustainable for me in terms of rising property taxes. I'm 80 years old. I'm a widow. I work part-time. I volunteer. I want to see my families. I want to see my grandkids. But this is not sustainable for me. I don't want to move to Eagan. Just want to let you know that. So, on behalf of all kinds of old people who are home tonight, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Speaker eight, Jim. Then we'll have speaker 10, Sean. And then 11, Alyssa. Jim Walsh. Okay? If Jim is here, he'll be welcome to come back anytime.
Good evening and thank you, council members. My name is Sean Broome. I'm here as the Director of Public Policy with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce, 81 South 9th Street, downtown Minneapolis. I have a letter from the president of our organization. On behalf of over 1,500 members of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, I want to thank you for all the time and work that has gone into crafting a nearly $1.5 billion budget. As this process comes to a close, there are a few remarks that we think are important to share. We strongly support the mayor's investment in affordable housing. Regionally, too many people cannot afford housing where they want to live, and the mayor's investment is an important first step in addressing this. It's also important to remember that any meaningful investment must be lasting and sustainable. It's important that you consider how to continue investing in affordable housing construction in the future. A one-time expansion of affordable housing dollars will not undo the decades of under-investment. There are two items in the proposed Minneapolis Police Budget we want to highlight as important priorities for the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. First is the expansion of the Mental Health Co-Responder Model. The co-responder program advances the principles of community-supportive policing, and its expansion south of downtown is an important investment. We believe you should continue to build on the success of this program. Expanding the community-facing efforts of the police department should be a priority moving forward, and our members and partners around the city look forward to being part of that work. The mayor and police chief's proposal to civilianize eight positions is also a meaningful investment in professionalizing some of the technical roles in the police department. It'll help maximize the number of sworn officers who can respond to calls, investigate crimes, and walk beats. And there are several advantages to the proposed civilianization. There will be savings in lower FTE costs, increased capability in our technical staff, and greater capacity for investigations. This is a sensible proposal that helps MPD respond to residents and businesses and makes MPD stronger. We urge you to support the proposal to civilianize the eight MPD technical positions. We look forward to working with you in the year to come on these and other important issues facing our city and region. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 11 is Alyssa. Then 12, oh, okay, actually, I'm sorry. 10 is Alyssa. Then 11 is Casey. Then 12 is Kevin.
Thank you. I'm stepping in, Alyssa.
Oh, thank you.
Her surname's so, but she said I could speak at this time. And first, I want to thank you, Mayor Frye, Council President Bender, Vice President Jenkins, and the council members. I want to get up and say I'm concerned, as an African-American descendant of a slave, that I always say about that the agenda of this city council. I feel like in 2012, I helped pass the GLP, the Right to Marriage, helped with the African-American community getting a vote over to pass that agenda there with Councilmember Fletcher. He would attest to that. And now, I look at the immigration, Councilmember Orsami, Councilmember Kano, it's about immigration now, putting resources and getting municipal IDs and other things, that it's going to be other things added on. I know that's just to seed money to 250 or whatever it is. And I'm concerned about our issue of violence that we've been talking about, that I talked about when I ran for mayor on the campaign trail. I talked about two things, housing and violence in our community. We're ready. The African-American community, churches, organizations, we're ready to do the work. We're ready to work with the chief of police, Chief Aradondo, deputy chief Knight, lieutenant Polvis, and the rest of them. We have been meeting with them to change, to try to change things, because I don't want our young kids to run around and think that's our only fight, just fighting the police. We got economic fights. And so, now, I'm saying to this council, we're ready in our community. Are you ready? What's your values? What's the value in the budget? I know you, I'm supportive of the credit union with the, with the five, whatever you give in the credit union to try to sard that. But I'm also here about us being able to participate in housing, and I talked to Councilmember Goodman about development, African-American development, that our churches are working on, along with Pastor McAfee, who's sitting over there, but and the violence that we're working with the department. We need the resources for our community, just like you need to pass ID, because it's a public safety thing, why you want to get these municipal IDs, but you know it's other stuff added on to that. So, don't, we can't be left out. I don't think African-Americans is welcome in the progressive movement. And a public safety thing, why you want to get these municipal IDs, but you know, it's other stuff added on to that. So don't, we can't be left out. I don't think African-Americans is welcome in the progressive movement. And, and Councilmember Warsaw, I've always worked in, with the immigrant community. Nobody can say that. But I'm telling you, we can't be left out. We can't be bogged down in a fight with, with the city about the police. I think Chief Aradondo, if African-Americans are going to have a great chance at building a relationship with the police, this is the time. This is the time. Thank you for reappointing them for three years, but listen to the council, the African-American community can do their work in their community. Let us go. Free us, let us go. You're free in every other community. We're not a part of the progressive movement. Make us a part of it. Let us do our work. That's what I say to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 11 is Casey, then 12 Kevin, 13 Darian, 14 Keith.
My name is Casey O'Neil. I'm 3245 Bloomington in South Minneapolis and feel compelled to speak very briefly in support of the Make Homes Happen campaign for $50 million dedicated funding for affordable housing. And I feel compelled to speak to that because of my experience purchasing a home in 2015 through the City of Lakes Community Land Trust and that, through that process, I'm very humbled and have been able to experience firsthand what this means to be able to participate in a program that I had no idea existed. I would have never considered that a program like that and an organization like that could function as well as it does and really change the lives of so many families and in the process really strengthen neighborhoods. And my own experience, I had never considered homeownership either as something I could afford or as something that would be something that I would speculate in or anything that's just never been in my mind. And along with that, I never considered the benefits of what that would mean for me and my family. And through the, just really the tenacity and the also spirit of collaboration of, of the City of Lakes Community Land Trust, I really saw a way that homeownership can work outside of that, the capitalist assumptions about how, how people can stabilize their position and really be more a part of their community. And I feel like there are many people that would benefit even more than I have and just felt compelled to share that with you today, that any, any funding that can go toward that and other programs like it, I feel like the money and the success that the land trust has had here is unique and any further investment in that will reap even more rewards. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Speaker 12 Kevin, 13 is Darian Keith, then Mike.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you council members and Mayor Frye for allowing so many to speak. I thank you everyone else for being here and I appreciate everyone else speaking as well so much. My name is Kevin Chavis. I live at 15 East Franklin Avenue in the Whittier neighborhood. And I just want to say I'm here as a member of Our Revolution, APSME member, SEIU member, and I support the Reclaim the Block group. And I do support their demand for divesting 5% of the police budget to fund our communities. And Our Revolution members last year actually came up with a list, a platform, list of six items that we thought were really important. And so I'll just read two of them right now. We wanted $50 million to create more affordable housing in community land trust, implement rent control, find vacant bank-owned properties, strengthen protection for tenants, including the right of first refusal. And the other thing was policing. Make $50 million of the police budget contingent on them voluntarily adopting a civilian review board to review cases of misconduct whose recommendations would be implemented in every case. And I think the council is, is moving in the right direction on the housing. I'm hoping that the money is not just a one-time thing. I would like to see a lot more money being put into housing long-term. The idea of policing, you know, right now is actually preempted, cities are preempted from allowing the community to actually reprimand the police. And I think that's a travesty. I think that our community actually should have a lot more control over our police. I know the buck stops at the mayor, but we would love to see more action. Folks in the city would love to see more action. Something the city could also do, we have lobbyists at the Capitol, maybe we could lobby the state to actually get rid of some of these laws on preemption, on rent control, on actually holding our police accountable. And a third thing, I think, expanding democracy. I really appreciate the fact that our third point was increasing immigrant rights, adopting MIRx platform to protect immigrant communities, including implementing a municipal ID, creating a legal fund to pay for legal representation for immigrants detained by us. These are some things and I thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Darian and Keith, then Mike, then Elaine.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Darian Ziegler. I am here on behalf of the City of Lakes Community Land Trust. I purchased my home a few years ago utilizing funds provided by CLCLT. And I'm here in support of the Make Homes Happen campaign because I believe in CLCLT's mission to provide affordable housing that the state of Minnesota desperately needs. Funding the Make Homes Happen campaign is a great way to assist in the motives to improving the quality of life for the people in need. Having the ability to become a homeowner has improved my quality of life more than ever imaginable, educationally, financially, and mentally. But providing opportunities like this not only improve the quality of life for the individual, but for their families, their communities, and the people as well. Investing in the Make Homes Happen is essential to increasing the level of affordable housing in Minnesota and providing a better quality of life and an opportunity to prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 14 Keith.
Hi, I'm Keith McCarron. I reside at Fourth Avenue North and First Street North, North Loop. Thank you, President Bender and Mayor Frye and the council members for inviting me to speak. Some background, I worked for close to 17 years in the Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center, popularly known as 911. I'd like to explode the myth that police do not have enough staff. They have plenty of staff. Our city allows for off-duty policing. And so if you go into any Lunds and Byerlys, Holiday, any number of private businesses, you'll see police officers standing in uniforms with their service revolvers and usually a squad car idling outside, practicing the role of a security guard. Those are trained police officers. They've gone through the academy. They have specialized skills and yet they're not being utilized. They're utilized as security guards to protect private businesses. When the police chief, National Police Chief from Denmark came to visit our 911 center after the 35W bridge collapse, and I showed him where we signed on off-duty officers, his jaw dropped. He said that was illegal in his country. They couldn't do that. They couldn't provide specialized protection for businesses over citizens. I think it's a shame that we do that here. And so you have, on any given day, you can go down to the sub-basement, not B911, but SB911, and visit Channel 7 and look at the log, and you've got at least 100 officers that are signed on off-duty. So I say, if they want to be security guards, quit MPD and become a security guard. If you want to be a police officer, be a police officer. Get out on a footbeat and walk the community. We've invested in software in ProQA, which was recently exposed in the media as a danger to responders, a danger to citizens, and stressing the 911 staff. So you've got lots of issues that you can save money. Thank you.
Speaker 15 Mike, then Elaine Jeff.
Hi, my name's Mike. So I just wrote down a few things that I was listening to. I, I've heard this, a few things where this affordable housing thing, I, I really don't even know what that means. When I was, when I got out of the military, I got a job, and then I found a house that I could afford, and then I paid on the mortgage of that house. Now I find out it's a right. Does that mean I get to stop paying? I don't know. And I, apparently I get to live where I want to live. I want to live on Lake Minnetonka then. I hear foods are right, medical treatments are right, colleges are right. I'm just wondering, what do I have to pay for anymore? And as far as the police go, you got people carjacking, invading homes, shooting guns in neighborhoods. If the police happen to do bad things to those people, I'm all for increasing the budget on, for the police.
Speaker 16 Elaine, then 17 is Jeff, 18 Sam, 19 Alex, welcome.
Hello esteemed council members. My name's Elaine Rasmussen and my business actually provides technical assistance and capital for entrepreneurs that are specifically on the north side, but I live in Badness Heights. I'm here to support the, your support of Village Financial cooperatives. When I was asked to join the executive committee of Village Financial, it was an unequivocal guess and this was just when it was an idea. This, the reason why I became a member of Village Financial is that we are long overdue for a financial institution that is by us and for us. We're already seeing the power of Village Financial and the doors haven't even opened. We recently had a member, a pledge member come to us who we helped get off of a big-box store debit card that was causing about $2,000 in transaction fees over the course of a year. She had been using a big-box transaction card for 12 years. That equates to approximately 12, $24,000 that could be used to purchase a home, which is actually her goal, and she wants to remain on the north side. With over $5 million in pledge deposits, Village Financial is dedicated to working with community members to lower their debt and to create financial plans that actually meet them where they are and to work with them on future goals such as homeownership, entrepreneurship, and college tuition for their children. Thank you so much for your continued support. I hope that you will not only look at this for this year, but also be considerate in thinking about how to consider the long-term sustainability of Village Financial. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 17 Jeff.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Bender, council members. I hadn't planned on coming up to speak. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to, to speak to the budget hearing and I, I'm here this evening as, with some increasing concern that there might be within the, the housing budget that's put forward, a potential push to pull some funds that were dedicated toward affordable homeownership to other purposes in the city. I absolutely applaud the efforts of the mayor and the council for putting affordable housing under the spotlight this year, and I think it's, it's a great start to something that I'm hopeful we'll see moving forward. As you all are aware, I'm one of the, the largest advocates for all of you in, in moving forward affordable housing here in the city. The affordable homeownership dollars, as I understand them, are disproportionately going to be working in North Minneapolis as we create affordable homeownership opportunities. As, as many of you know, vast majority, not the vast majority, but majority of, of single-family homes in North Minneapolis are rental. This is the opportunity for us, the colleagues that I work with, to create opportunities for permanency in a place where increasing displacement is going to happen. To a few of the other testimonies earlier, this is the opportunity for us to step up and do something right in North Minneapolis, to invest the dollars that have, in a place that has been disproportionately forgotten for a long time. And, and housing and homeownership is one of the ways that we can create that permanency and make sure that, that folks in North Minneapolis have an opportunity to stay there as, as the, the economics of housing move forward. I look forward to, to working with all of you and making sure that this budget and affordable housing continues to stay a priority moving forward and continue to thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 18 Sam, then Alex, welcome.
My name's Sam. Tonight I'll be speaking on behalf of the Central Neighborhood Organization. We are a neighborhood organization in South Minneapolis and I'm also, I work in South Minneapolis and I live in North Minneapolis and Allison is my council member. Tonight I just want to speak on a few things about relating to neighborhoods and housing. As a housing organizer at Can Do, we want the city to include dedicated line items for the 2020 neighborhood funding. And while there's this battle between funding for affordable housing, and I, and we do support affordable housing, in fact, we even support public housing. And regardless of what people think, housing is a right, food is a right, people being safe in their neighborhoods is a right, and, and not being killed by the police is, is a great right too, I think. And it's interesting that we're sitting here again in another budget hearing when the past three decades, and whether you were here or not, and whether you will be here for the next three decades or not, is, is really up to the people and not yourselves to hold people accountable. And so the creation of real affordable housing is something the city needs to put their, their money where their mouth is and dedicate funds to support initiatives that make change a reality now instead of 20 years in the future, instead of 2040. One of the biggest line items in the budget is for the police. In the central neighborhood, we were just quoted in the Star Tribune, thank you to one of the reporters who isn't here right now. And we think that if, if affordable housing money should go into, it shouldn't go into bloated nonprofits, it shouldn't go into the ineffective city, city offices that the money disappears into or is used ineffectively, and it definitely shouldn't go to the police who can't do their jobs and no one wants to hold them accountable. And so definitely we support doing that and more affordable housing for people in urban neighborhoods, especially people of color and the most vulnerable communities.
Thank you. Speaker 19 Alex. If Alex comes back. Speaker 20 Taishan. Then Billy, then Miriam, then Jeffrey.
Hi, council. I'm Taishan. I reside in the Stevens Square area off of Franklin and LaSalle. I did write a little thing here, but I can go off when I'm hearing and everything. I've been sitting with the Coalition of Black Lives Matter, AMN350, NAC, and we're still here on the same thing. People are getting tired. I'm getting tired. I want, I don't want this approved because there's other important things that can, the money can go to. Air quality, it can go towards that, you know, just like over north, they had the metal recycling place or whatever had shut down or whatever and no one knew about it. People, people's kids were getting sick. I have asthma myself and I just had to totally get out of there and thank God they did shut it down. But, uh, stuff like that, you know, put the money where it's useful. We, we matter, you know? Police got other things that they, they want to do. Yes, they're people. I'm not saying they're not needed. They are needed sometimes, but why are they installing fear into people? That's not right. That's not right. Who's policing these police officers? Why are they still on their jobs and murdering people and they're, they're going home free? I, if I do it, I'm not going home. I lose everything. Another thing is just educating people on how they, how they, how they get their jobs and everything and how, how they're moving. I, I just can't sit well. They're installing fear in people and I don't like it. They should, who's policing these people? Budget should not be going towards them at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 21 Billy, then Miriam, Jeffrey, Ed.
Good evening, city council. My name is Billy Brownlee. I'm a Board of Director of Aon Affordable Housing, partner with Make Homes Happen. I want to thank the mayor for his commitment to affordable housing and his sharing the vision to create and sustain quality and affordable housing to save lives and save communities. And that's exactly what happened to me coming 2012, coming off of a over-two-decade opioid addiction. I got treatment here in Minnesota, 2012, and it was through affordable housing I got that treatment. Through the treatment, I got a job at Jimmy John's sweeping the floors, emptying the garbage. Through there, I was able to get affordable housing at Alliance Apartments. And from there, I was able to get market rate, 1409 11th Avenue South. So I have a very, very good history with how affordable housing has helped me. So now is my time and opportunity to help someone else. So cleaning the floors and, and mopping and emptying the garbage turned into that being my Jimmy John's. And now I'm able to hire for 14 Jimmy Johns in the downtown area and the U of M campus. Three out of 10 applications are homeless. And there's a lot of work for us to do and sometimes you have to be the light that you want to see in the community. And today I'm striving to reach that goal, to be the light. And today I'm out sharing my story with others and sharing what can be possible and what is. is possible. And today I want to thank the mayor for your outstanding contribution and with your vision that Aon shares with you. So I want to thank you and I want to say again, sometimes you have to be the beacon of light and today I am the light.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-two, Miriam.
Hi, everyone. My name's Miriam. I'm a member of Jewish Community Action and I'm here with the Coalition for Reclaim the Block. Study after study shows that living wage, access to holistic health services and treatment, educational opportunity, and stable housing are far more successful in reducing crime than police or prisons. We are calling for the investment in black and brown communities and ironically, there's actually massive investments currently in black and brown communities, but that investment is to criminalize them. And that is why I'm, I support divesting 5% of the police budget to fund community-led safety programs. As a Jewish person, I'm proud to stand with Reclaim the Block. We're about to celebrate Hanukkah as a community where one of our traditions is to set menorahs outside of our, at our windows, which labels us as Jews in our homes. This is something that hasn't been safe for the majority of our history. And so many Jews grow up with this deep yearning for safety in our communities and we know that the solutions for safety, the solutions that our communities need, they come when our communities stand together. So that's why I'm here to say, fund communities, not cops.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-three, Jeffrey. Then Ed, then Jared.
Good evening. Council President Bender, Mayor Frye, council members, and especially my own ward four councilman Cunningham, pleased to see you on the dais. Jeffrey Strand, 5100 Thomas Avenue North, Shingle Creek neighborhood. This fall, I just marked my fortieth year as a Minneapolitan, transplanted from Greater Minnesota. So I wanted to come here tonight as I've done previously and as the young lady said earlier, propose taxes. So I realize these are the maximum levies for the most part, but 17.6% increase for someone in North Minneapolis, probably because of the severe crash in values that we suffered in the mortgage foreclosure crisis. Nobody in my circle of friends or neighbors can afford that long-term and stay in our homes. But that aside, I want to say that I'm proud to be a Minneapolitan. I am pleased to live in such a progressive, forward-thinking city with excellent leadership and I'm willing to pay for good government and programs like the Community Participation Program for Neighborhood Organizations. And I'd like to recommend and plead with you to add that to the five-year financial plan as I believe Councilman, Councilmember Gordon and Reich, and I won't go out on a limb to say others who may have supported that, please do that and give the neighborhood organizations that do such great work in the city and get millions of dollars of volunteer time and effort for our city. I would also like you to restore $40,000 to One Minneapolis Fund. Great program. I'd like you to enact the International Association of Public Participation Ethics of Community Engagement and fund neighborhoods at $10 million in the future. I support racial and socioeconomic equity programs, increasing black homeownership and other communities of color, people who are de-housed by the foreclosure crisis and the Great Recession. I believe Councilman Cunningham and Ellison have a plan for that. I support Envision Community for Very Extremely Affordable Housing. I think they have a great plan that involved the homeless in the development of the plan, totally consistent with those IEP two principles. I do support the mayor's proposal. I would like you to defuse situations and avoid police killing of residents or suicide by cop. And I appreciate your consideration. Hope you'll work in public safety with new sheriff-elect Hutchinson, new sheriff in town. I'm very optimistic as a DFL resident about Governor-elect Walz and Lieutenant Governor-elect Flanagan and the DFL House majority. Maybe we can get the $15 minimum wage in the state so people can afford to live here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-four, Ed.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I'm Ed Sutton. I live in Powderhorn in Ward nine. I'm a, Minneapolis-born and raised and a product of the public schools. I'm a renter and a worker and a member of the Twin Cities Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here in solidarity with Reclaim the Block and I support their demands. If what we're all trying to do here is keep our city safe, healthy, and livable, there are so many things we could be funding instead of more cops and more PR for cops and it doesn't even take that much imagination. This room is full of people dedicated to supporting and caring for their neighbors in the midst of a whole stack of crises, an opioid crisis, a housing crisis, a climate crisis, as well as looming political and water crises that frankly, cops can't do anything about. It's not even what the tools they use are for. To change the subject slightly, I'm also here to support the Inclusive Financing for Minnesotans Coalition in their efforts to establish a transformative program to reduce the disproportionate energy cost burden on working-class and poor city residents like me, living in shabby housing, and simultaneously reduce the city's carbon emissions so maybe we won't all cook in 12 years. So please ensure that all the franchise fee funding from last year for the Clean Energy Partnership work becomes ongoing rather than one-time funding and make sure this funding stays transparent. Thank you for establishing that transparency, by the way. There was a little hiccup there. So fund communities and climate resilience, not cops. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-five, Jared. Then Ellen, Janet, Lindsay. Welcome.
So my name's Jared Julius, 2904 Lindell Avenue South. I'm speaking first as a white cis man in a culture that values those things. But I want to tell you, I personally am afraid of the police. I'm a queer man. I've seen my friends, especially trans folks, suffer brutality at the hands of the police and I stand here in solidarity with Reclaim the Block in their demand for 5% divestment of the MPD's budget into communities. I myself am a community organizer, especially in areas of transformative justice, which even if you believe the cops are a terrific thing, reduces the reliance on those resources. I would like to see funding for something like that. And I am also frequently involved in other queer community organizations and things that I've witnessed, for instance, are people who are afraid to call the cops. Two men in a relationship can't necessarily rely on sympathy if one of them is a victim of domestic violence. And so what I'm really asking, I guess, more than anything is what is it do each of you value? I think that's the most important question. I value safety for myself and for my friends and it doesn't matter if a person empowered to murder me looks like me or not. So I just want to reiterate, I support 5% divestment from the MPD. I think there are a lot of excellent voices in this room and I'm not going to take up my full two minutes. I want everybody to have a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-six, Ellen. Then we'll have Janet, Lindsay, and Barbara. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Ellen Sally. I'm president of the Family Housing Fund and also a seventh ward resident. Thank you for the opportunity to appear in front of you. Many of you know the work of the Family Housing Fund. We work with communities to help them address their housing challenges so families have a place that they can call home from which they can prosper. And I testify today in support of the budget and I want to highlight a few components that I think are really significant and important. The first one is the Stable Homes and Stable Schools Initiative. This is innovative and responsive to the needs of struggling families with school-age children. The impact of housing instability on educational outcomes is well documented in research. Quite simply, children can't learn if they don't have a stable place to call home. Rental assistance and supportive services gives these children and families a foundation on which they can grow. Only one in four eligible families are fortunate enough to have a federally funded housing choice voucher program, or voucher, which is of course, the largest rental subsidy program in the city. We can't rely solely on the federal government to provide and help meet the significant needs of affordability in Minneapolis. We need to act locally and this initiative does that. We simultaneously need to support the development of more affordable housing units and the increase in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is aimed squarely at increased production. This is another example of an important step that we can take with local revenue. And finally, the proposed Director of Strategic Partnerships position emphasizes the importance of affordable housing to our city. This person will be charged with fostering relationships with business leaders that will yield new alliances and resources to draw on as we tackle the affordability challenge. I think a budget is a statement of values and this budget says we value affordability and I urge your support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-seven, Janet. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Janet Court and I live at 1216 Powderhorn Terrace. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for your hard work on finding ways to accomplish a lot without stressing out taxpayers too much. Obviously, some are taxed more than others. But very happy about the robustness of the housing plan, that it's covering a lot of different, different situations, people who already own homes, people who are looking to own homes, people who are currently renting, people who are looking to rent, people who are homeless currently. And implement, in the implementation of this plan, really want to make sure that attention is given to the very deeply affordable housing needs. In Ward nine, where I live, the median income is drastically lower than the city as a whole. I live on just over $800 a month myself and many in my neighborhood live on even less than that or are supporting more people on an equal amount. So just want to thank you again for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-eight, Lindsay. Then Barbara. If Lindsay comes back, Lindsay Turner, we'll welcome you. So then speaker twenty-nine is Barbara.
Hello, council. My name is Barbara Draper. I live at 2212 19th Avenue Northeast. I'm a member of MNIPL, MN350, and the Methodist Earth Keepers. I'd like to thank the council for its noteworthy goals and climate action plans and I'm glad to see additional funding in 2019 of $900,000 for more aggressive action on climate goals, specifically such things as additional staffing for energy benchmarking of commercial properties and the proposed benchmarking of multifamily buildings. Although I am dismayed to see what looks like meter of savings from the commercial program, only 3.4% less energy in 2016 over 2014 and only 3% over five years in public buildings. I'm also happy to see one FTE for intervening at the state. It is a shame our state has not acted to protect Minnesota and our grandchildren from coming devastation of climate change. Other programs such as Pay as You Save, which you will be studying, I urge implementation of this program. I don't see however, specific reference to funding for creation of the blueprint for 100% renewable energy for municipal use by 2022 and for the city by 2030. Can you show me where that is? Also, have you provided funding for the costs the blueprint will surely require for implementation? Can you show me that? As a final comment, the $1.4 million budget for climate action to fight our greatest existential threat is only 1/1,000 of the $1.5 billion budget. Is this the pittance you would have allocated to fight World War II? I thank you and I urge continued and aggressive action to avert the worst effects of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty, Andrea.
Good evening, council members. My name's Andrea Kippe. I live at 3220 Fifth Avenue South in Councilmember Conno's Ward. I've lived here since 1996 and I've been operating rental properties in Minneapolis since 2005. The other one is in Councilmember Fletcher's district, excuse me, ward. I currently have three units and as soon as I finish testifying here tonight, I'm going to go home and grow out my bathroom in what will soon be unit four. I'm here to support the following, rent control, which I know is not pertinent to this budget but is part of an overall affordable housing strategy, a public option for the housing crisis, which is building thousands of new city-owned affordable units paid for by taxing big developers and the super rich. A lot of the commentary here today has been talking about really specific line items, specific amounts of money, but all of that is dwarfed by the funding potential that has not yet been fully tapped in taxing those that have made out like bandits from the last 10 years of gaming the housing sector and the Trump tax breaks, which are a huge windfall for the wealthiest in our community. And finally, a tenants' bill of rights that includes policies like a six-month notification for any major rent increase, caps on deposits and move-in fees, just cause eviction and other protections. What's this you say? A landlady supporting a tenant's bill of rights? I am a small-time player. I'm undercapitalized, especially compared to big developers in our city, some of whom are operating literally with international funds from firms like the Blackstone Group, which has been operating in the metro area since at least 2013. Even so, I have no, nothing to fear from basic protections from tenants. I've never evicted a tenant. I've never charged a move-in fee. I've never charged an application fee and this year, effective January 1st, I'll have charged my first ever rent increase since I started operating over a decade ago. If I can break even renting out a 100-year-old house that I bought at the top of the housing bubble without raising rents for over 10 years, then the staff of the city of Minneapolis should be able to run public housing and at least break even. You can borrow at super-low rates. You can use competitive bidding and economies of scale to keep construction costs low. You can write your own ticket on inclusive housing policies that allow you to have a good mix of market rate and subsidized units in every building. You have every single resource that you would need to succeed and run a fantastic city-owned housing program. Cooperative buildings have done it. I've done it. The city of Minneapolis can do it. You can tax the rich, set up a huge fund that dwarfs the numbers we're currently talking about, and build a ton of public housing by transit lines and our bike routes because it's the right thing to do for our city.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-one, Eli. Then Claudio, then Angela.
Hi, my name's Eli. I live in Stevens Square and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. I support moving 5% or more of the police budget to fund our communities. I think especially pressing right now is getting more funding for public housing. Many in the establishment claim that they want to use the market to try to bring affordable housing to people, that we simply need to build more houses to solve the housing crisis. What does that really mean? It means the rich get to live in luxury housing while the rest of us are forced into substandard housing that's kept affordable because of its low quality. And if the quality's improved, the rent is raised. I lived in one of Steve Friend's buildings where our apartment was traded between different shell companies before being sold to a different company who properly did some small renovations and then raised the rent. We don't need more market solutions to housing. We need to invest in affordable, high-quality public housing so that everyone can have a safe and affordable place to live. In addition to divesting from the police force, we should tax big corporations and the rich to get even more money for public housing. Housing is a human right and we shouldn't let human rights be dictated by the free market, which continues to build luxury housing while homeless people freeze outside. We have five Fortune 500 companies and a bloated police budget right here in Minneapolis. We can afford to house every single person in the city. It's a matter of political will. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudio, welcome. Then Angela, Patrick, and Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Claudio. I live in North Minneapolis. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative and I'm also here in solidarity with all the community organizations and all the renters in our city who have had enough of the rising rents. The wall of forgotten natives didn't happen in a vacuum. It happened because the market-based approach to housing will always fail the most vulnerable and it was only a matter of time that Minneapolis joined the shameful rank of cities who cannot take care of their people. Our current housing policy is not working. I'd also like to add that in the north side, people of color continue to be brutalized by police and the solutions so far have been an eight-hour implicit bias training and more new cops. Policing policy also not working. As long as our city continues to bend over backwards to please developers and big businesses, rents are not going to come down. As long as we keep throwing money at the police department, police will continue to brutalize black and brown neighborhoods. The proposals put forward by the community today- The proposals put forward by the community today are great starts, and I fully support them, but let's remember how we won a $15 minimum wage here in Minneapolis. We organized a mass movement and put pressure on you all to actually come through. In Seattle, when the city wanted to build a $160 million police station, it was organizers with Black Lives Matter and our Socialist Alternative Councilmember Shalmas Sawant that blocked its construction and diverted money towards building affordable housing instead. And we can do that here. We don't need to continue raising property taxes on homeowners either. We have more than enough Fortune 500 companies to tax to take care of everyone. And so I'm here to ask you this: whose side are you on? You can't serve developers and the police and still claim to serve the people. We know this because that's how the council has tried to function in the past, and yet here we are with out-of-control rents and an out-of-control police department. So whose side are you on? Are you using your position on the council to invite developers to run amok and give the police department a blank check to fund their occupation of black and brown neighborhoods? Or are you using your position to lead and support mass movements from below to make concrete wins for those struggling to live in Minnesota? Divest from police, give the community democratic control of housing funds, advocate for us for rent control, tax the rich to build high-quality public housing. Whose side are you on?
Thank you. Speaker 33 is Angela, welcome.
Hi, I'm Angela Tona. I live in Ward 3 on University Avenue. I'll be quick, but I just wanted to say that I'm currently a student at the Humphrey School of Public Affairs, and as a master's candidate in a top-tier policy school, I can say with confidence that all of the recent studies suggest that investing in programs that strengthen our communities are the most effective way to drastically lower crime rates and increase education, employment, and income rates. I'm here with Reclaim the Block, and I fully support divesting 5% of the police budget to fund our communities and to chart a new course for community safety. We know that the budget invests three times more money in the police than in affordable housing and in health combined, and we absolutely must invest in sustaining these resources if we want any hope of a strong and healthy community. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 34, Patrick, then Jennifer, Andrew, Susan.
Hello, my name is Patrick Presley. I live at 2103 Second Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm here today because Alliance Housing saved my life. I grew up in Gary, Indiana, surrounded by poverty, drugs, and violence. I found myself in my first rehab for cocaine addiction at 14. I started using heroin at 20. I was stealing from stores in order to support my habit. I was a criminal, and I ended up in jail, and then that led to prison, rightly so. But it was when I got out of prison clean and sober, and I had decided that I wanted to change my life and find a new way to live and become a better person, I found that because of my status as a felon, I couldn't find jobs, I couldn't find housing, and I ended up right back in the lifestyle that led me to prison in the first place in order to try to survive. So then I went back to prison. Well, getting out of prison the second time, I tried as hard as I could in research, and I found Alliance Housing. Alliance Housing was willing to give me an affordable place to live where I was able, despite my felonies, where I was able to then form a foundation and start working on my recovery. I was able to go to 12-step meetings. I found employment. I'm now living a recovery lifestyle. I've been sober for five years. I have a job. I pay taxes. I'm an upstanding member of the community. I volunteer, and all of this was thanks to the chance that I was given by allowing Alliance Housing to give me a break. And I just suggest that whatever is necessary, whatever funding you guys need to do, this is a very important thing. There's a lot of people coming out of prison who are trying to change, and they're not having that opportunity to do so because there's not enough places like Alliance Housing out there. Thank you very much for your time. Have an excellent night.
Thank you. Jennifer, then Speaker 36, Andrew, then Susan, then Rhea.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time today. My name is Jennifer Arnold. I live at 2631 12th Avenue South, and I'm co-director of Inquilinos Unidos por Justicia, but I'm also here with Reclaim the Block tonight. So two weeks ago, I got a call from a tenant in housing court. She called me. We were connected through a mutual friend because she wanted to fight her eviction. And this was a tenant who was living at 2003 Aldrich. She got moved when her building started to crumble. She and her neighbors had noticed that the building was cracking and crumbling for months, but the landlord didn't relocate people until the city gave them 48 hours to move. Because she had to pay moving fees, and she lost her job as a result of the move, she was late on rent. And so she called me so that she could have support in the moment to figure out what to do. So I spent the next five days connecting her to a lawyer so she could have representation, finding money so she could pay the money and actually fight it in court. And this is not a surprising situation for me. This is stuff that we do all the time in our organization. And so the situation that tenants are facing is urgent. It's eviction. It's 100 evictions a week. This continues. And so I'm really happy to see that there are investments in affordable housing, but we need more than that. We actually need investments in renters that go right to renters' pockets to change the balance of power between renters and landlords. We need money for a lawyer for every tenant in court so that we don't have to do it in an emergency. We need money for a culture change at regulatory services so that people will be treated well and their repairs will get made. We need money for organizing for renters so that we can get to this stuff before it's in court. And we need all of this. Hundreds of tenants are going through this every day. So I think that we can use the money, divesting that 5% from the police department, in directly helping tenants so that we can stop people from being homeless before it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 36, Andrew, then Susan, Rhea, Lisa.
Hi, y'all. My name's Andrew. I live at 3602 11th Avenue. I'll try to keep it more interesting than email up there. As I stand here, residents in five buildings representing 50 families are meeting in our office -- sorry. I work with Inquilinos Unidos por Justicia, United Renters for Justice. So as I stand here, renters from 50 families are meeting in our office to envision the future that they want. They want, as Steve Friend, the landlord that you're all aware of, is in court trying to evict them. This is something that we see every single day. This is a result of the system that we've inherited, and this is something that we need to change. I want to call into this room Jacinto, Reyna, Santos, Hasmin, Denise, the people that can't be here because they have to fight against their landlords. It's clear, we've inherited a city that's built on generations of racist policies. We've inherited a city that faces a housing crisis. We've inherited a city where Thurman Blevins can be run down and murdered. And it's painful. It is so painful to come here and to beg for funding that would change what we've inherited. It's painful to have to beg for policies that put tenants over landlords, that put working people over employers. It's painful to have to beg for aligning of funding to support children's ability to breathe versus industrial development in our communities. It's so painful because every dollar that continues in the way that it's been spent continues this system, continues the same thing. And unless we fundamentally change and align resources around human needs, it can only get worse. So I'd say, yes, of course, divest from the police budget. Yes, of course, create affordable housing strategies, but don't stop there. Be clear that you have so much more work to do. Don't depend on strategies that depend on incentivizing developers and landlords to build affordable housing. Demand it. Demand housing tenant-controlled cooperatives and public ownership. We need you to lead, and we'll be here with you, but we won't stop until we've created a city where your race and your zip code don't affect and say what the course of the rest of your life is. I'm thankful to be here. I'm thankful to stand up for what's right, and I'm thankful for those of you that are willing to do it as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker 37, Susan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. I'm Susan Rose. I'm a block leader in the Harrison neighborhood of North Minneapolis. I'm 63 years old. I've never been involved with illegal drugs or gangs, but I have been in four gang shootings, three of them since July. I'm here tonight to oppose the proposal to reduce funding to the police department. Tonight, I am wearing, as I wear every day, Level 3A body armor. This is what I have to wear to come out of my home in North Minneapolis to protect myself from being shot. You are here tonight to debate a funding cut to the police department. Police protection in North Minneapolis is already inadequate. There have been only nine days in this calendar year without gunfire in North Minneapolis. Regular working people, homeowners with families, are tired of getting caught in the crossfire of teenage gangs. The police department needs, right now, an additional 60 to 80 officers. We, the residents of North Minneapolis, have taken concealed carry classes. We practice our marksmanship at shooting ranges. We have lawfully bought weapons, and we lawfully carry them. In the future, you are going to hear that members of the public have returned fire when fired upon by teenage gangs. This is the scenario that you have already set up. Please be sure that this is what you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 38, Rhea, then Lisa, Nadia, and Barbara.
Members of the city council, my name is Rhea, and I'm here with the wonderful folks of Make Homes Happen and Jewish Community Action. I want to thank you first and foremost for the $40 million from local sources that has been put into solving the housing crisis. I want to share with all of you a brief story as to why housing matters to me personally and why I feel it's crucial that we put in the work and the money to actually get this right. A couple years ago, I was living with a friend of mine over in northeast Minneapolis. I had recently quit a job, a particularly difficult one, as a barista under management that really did not want a trans woman on their staff. And the other job I was leaving for turned around at the last minute to reject me. I was unemployed for two months, unable to afford hormones and other necessary prescriptions because I needed every cent to cover food and rent. I became sick from all the stress I was under. I had even more difficulties managing my symptoms stemming from my bipolar-one disorder and major depressive disorder, to the point where I really couldn't even leave my room to go for any interviews. I couldn't reply to emails very well, and I was down to my last $50. My rent was due in three weeks. I had no job. I couldn't crowdfund the money I needed to stay afloat. It was the middle of winter, and I was about to be homeless. I got really lucky. I got a call from a job that I interviewed for about a month ago before my symptoms got too hard to manage, and they wanted me to come in for training right away. For me, housing shouldn't be contingent on knowing the right people at the right time, crowdfunding, or, in my case, just plain luck from a job I forgot I interviewed for a month ago. If we invest $50 million of annual funding for 10 years and put that into housing, I think we can create programs, resources, organizations, and coalitions capable of solving our housing crisis in ways that actually meet community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 39, Lisa, then Nadia, Barbara, and Dana. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Lisa, 422 Russell Avenue North. I'm here today in solidarity with Reclaim the Block. To me, it's of the utmost importance that we treat human beings with compassion, and that's why I support a 5% divestment from the police. It's very important to me that we treat our community and people with utmost respect, and that's why I hope that we will continue to invest in affordable housing and invest in our communities, and particularly the most vulnerable communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 40, Nadia, then Barbara and Dana.
Hi, my name is Nadia. I live in Marcy Homes, and I moved to Minneapolis a year and a half ago from Seattle. I left Seattle not just because I was working over 50 hours a week and still paid over half of my rent, or over half of my income towards rent, not just because I saw many community spaces destroyed to build luxury apartments, but because I increasingly did not see how I could afford a future there. I currently work as a housing specialist, serving South Minneapolis and surrounding suburbs, where I spend five days a week confronted by the same issues I thought I was leaving. Every day, I speak with single parents who earn $20 an hour and still can't find an affordable house in the entirety of the metro area. People call me about being evicted because of $250 owed. Minneapolis, like Seattle, is facing a crisis, and we need housing to be our financial priority, not policing. We cannot destroy encampments if we have nowhere else for people to live freely and in community. We need to increase the Affordable Housing Trust to $50 million and have democratic oversight over that fund. We need accountable parties to update and preserve NOAA without displacing communities. We need housing for people with high barriers. We need city-owned housing that doesn't discriminate against poor credit and folks with UDs or past convictions. We need to tax corporations who make billions off the backs of working people in our city. Safe housing is not a privilege. It is a human right, and we need to treat it like one. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, then Dana, then Montana.
I'm Barbara Litesi. Madam Chair, council members, I am here, and I have to start out by saying something I have said for 50 years. North Minneapolis has always been the bastard child of Minneapolis. It's time to change it. It is time to change it. I have worked in various capacities during my 50 years. I will not leave because it's my home. However, it's time, we, those of us who are low-income, and yes, I'm low-income since I don't work anymore, those of us who are low-income, those of us who are people of color, those of us who are struggling through whatever life has given us that we're in the process of attempting to work through, are entitled to be treated with respect and dignity from this city. We pay your salaries, and you ignore us. We don't like that. But you know what? One of these days, we're going to get a good organizer. I'm too old. But one of these days, we're going to get a good organizer, and there are going to be some major changes in behalf of the disenfranchised individuals and families in North Minneapolis. I'm here, believe it or not, to support the mayor's 2019 budget. I am here because housing, as a young lady just said, it's a right. You're not doing anybody a favor, but what you would be doing is stabilizing our communities because we have families here. We have children who are not in gangs, but who may be. They are on the mist. They're just on the edges because parents have to work. Childcare is expensive. We still need the respect and the attention of those of you who are human beings, who are mothers, fathers, grandmothers, one of these days, and soon to be great-grandmothers. You are in a position to affect our future. Change it. Change it. Look into your hearts about the obligations that you made during your campaign speeches about the platform you were running on, and honor that. We need it. We're entitled to it. I'm also here to say that after having raised my children, after having lived in stable housing, and after having retired, I was able to again, thank God to the Land Trust, the Dibley Community Land Trust, to again become a homeowner. Half of my social security check goes to my rent, my mortgage. Doesn't bother me because I still have half left. Many seniors don't have that. They don't have that option. But if affordable housing were available across the line to everyone, everyone, then more people would prepare for it. So you're the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Dana. Our next speaker is Dana Lippert. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Hello, my name is Dana. I live at the intersection of Park and Forty-Second Street. I stand here today in support with Reclaim the Block, asking that you divest from the MPD budget and invest more money in community programs and organizations. I support divesting five percent of the police budget. Instead of investing more money in community cooperations, I support putting that money towards community-based safety initiatives. I am a youth worker, and over the summer, I collaborated with a few organizations and youth in the community to put on an event. The youth and families that attended were mostly people of color, and the young people we are working with expressed a strong desire to have as few cops as possible at the event, acknowledging that a higher police presence does not equal safety for a lot of people. There was a miscommunication about the number of police officers that should have been present, and more cops than expected came. As a result, many of the members of the community felt unwelcome and unsafe at this event that we had planned with such a large police presence. If there was more funding for community-led safety programs, then members of our own communities could be present at events providing more restorative and community-based safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number forty-three, Montana Hirsch.
Hello, my name is Montana, and I live in South Minneapolis at Forty-third and Park. I’m here in support of Reclaim the Block. I work at a high school in St. Paul as an advisor, and almost half of our students are either homeless or highly mobile. This is my third year working there, and I can’t tell you how many stories I’ve heard from students about traumatizing or highly upsetting interactions with the police. They are high school youth. They have had guns pulled on them while unarmed in front of our school. They have been pinned to the wall on light rail by transit police, and so many of them need to worry about where they will sleep each night. These youth do not need any more trauma. Police don’t make them feel safe. Accessible housing makes them feel safe. And they don’t all live in St. Paul. Many of them work in Minneapolis, some live in Minneapolis and are directly affected by police in this community. So this is why I support divesting five percent of the police budget to support our communities and resources that actually make people feel safe, like affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. The next speaker, number forty-four, is Catherine Polarmi. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Catherine, and I live at 2918 Fillmore Street Northeast in Audubon Park. I work with the Sierra Club North Star Chapter, but I’m mostly speaking on behalf of myself. I strongly support the proposed investments for more affordable housing because I’m one of the, about fifty percent of Minneapolis residents who rent. Over the past few years, my roommates and I have really struggled to find properties that we could afford. This year, we moved into Audubon Park to rent one of the houses we could find that was within our budget. Although I love Ward One in the northeast area, we would have preferred to live in a part of the city that had better access to transit options so that we wouldn’t, so we wouldn’t have to own and maintain four cars for one single-family house. That being said, I readily acknowledge my own privilege and know that many, many residents are far more disadvantaged than I am. I can’t even imagine how difficult renting is in Minneapolis for low-income residents, families with children, and people that face institutionalized discrimination. For these reasons, we will not be able to achieve greater equity for all residents until we take drastic measures to make housing more affordable. I also want to briefly mention the idea of creative destruction and how cities have always been at the heart of evolution and change. Many residents, including young people like myself, are redefining what the American dream is and are not necessarily striving to be homeowners. For me, I dream about living in a city that offers integrated transit that allows me to not have to own a car because that’s what I believe is important. All residents, including renters, deserve to be able to live in parts of the city that fit their individual conceptions for a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-five, Tim. Forty-five, Tim. Then we have forty-six, Russ Timothy. So if Tim comes back, Tim Schaefer will welcome you anytime, then Russ is next.
Thank you, Council President Bender, Councilmembers, and Mayor Frye. I’m Russ Adams. I’m with the Alliance for Metropolitan Stability, and I’m a proud resident of the Powderhorn Park neighborhood, and my organization is a member of the Make Homes Happen Coalition. I first want to thank the mayor for allocating over forty million dollars in his budget for affordable housing. It’s a record number. It demonstrates a true commitment to this issue. Most of you, when you were running for election, talked about affordable housing. Many of you are crafting policies right now that are moving through your committee process, a variety of strategies that are designed to take risks, to disrupt market logic, and to shake up the systems that have really been a barrier for our citizens to be able to stay in place and thrive in their neighborhoods. So I want to applaud you for your efforts and for being creative about that. You knew I was going to say, however, the city’s budget commitment is a good first step, but however, we need to do more, and the Make Homes Happen Coalition’s goal has always been a fifty-million-dollar, locally sourced, flexible fund for ten years. So half a billion-dollar commitment over ten years to create a reservoir of funding, a pool that we can draw down on to fund many of those strategies that you’re crafting. All of them need money, whether we want to produce more affordable housing, whether we want to preserve the housing stock that we have, or protect the tenants in our apartment buildings that, as you’ve heard from previous speakers, they’re under threat, and things aren’t getting easier for them, they’re getting harder. And that’s why we need a real commitment for more affordable housing. And lastly, I just want to thank the members of the Reclaim the Block Coalition for recognizing affordable housing as one of the community priorities. I want to say that they have made a compelling case tonight for thinking strategically about our public safety policies and reconsidering how we invest in them. So thank you to them.
Thank you. Timothy, then Michelle.
Hello, thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Timothy Denner Thomas. I live in the Corcoran neighborhood in South Minneapolis. I wanted to express thanks for some of the actions that have been taken in this budget and also speak to ways that we need to, we need to go further. Just as a, as a reminder, at our budget process last year, the City Council approved a half percent increase in the city’s utility franchise fee for the express purpose of helping Minneapolis residents and businesses, particularly low-income residents and renters, as well as local businesses, reduce their energy costs and invest in the transition to clean energy. As you, many of you also know, in the first years of cycle of that budget, a lot of the funding that was, was originally raised through that franchise fee was not used for that purpose. The, the structuring of the budget was not structured to ensure that that, that funding was actually dedicated towards helping people in Minneapolis shift their energy consumption and energy sources. I really want to appreciate the work that Mayor Frye’s office and the City Council has done this year to ensure that franchise fee funding is dedicated towards that purpose. But I wanted to highlight that nine hundred thousand dollars of that funding has been dedicated on only a one-time basis. It’s, it’s really time, given that this is an ongoing, year-over-year funding source, that we are also dedicating those funds on a year-over-year, ongoing basis. So I’d encourage the council to make that shift. Second, we’ve seen some important improvements in the transparency and public accountability of those funds this year, and we really appreciate that. And we’d also invite the council to direct city staff to provide a full and transparent public accounting of where those funds have been used and where they’re used going forward, just to help everyone understand how our, how our resources are being used to help us make that transition. Finally, I want to say, you know, this is a, this is a start, but we are talking, in the case of climate change, of one of the largest, one of the largest challenges we as society have ever faced, and alongside challenges like affordable housing, police accountability that have been brought up tonight, we’re, we’re really just taking baby steps here. Why do we have to fight for this? Why isn’t this something that we’re not going forward with all out? Why is it so easy to find funding for a police department that is killing people in our city and not some of these other solutions? This is Minneapolis. Let’s put our money where our mouth is, and let’s go big. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-eight, Michelle. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Gross, and I’m the president of the organization Communities United Against Police Protection. I’m here to discuss public safety in our budget and to support the demand for a five percent reduction in the police budget in order to fund other kinds of public safety measures. You’re going to hear from some people that are going to say that talking about reducing the police budget by even that very modest amount is some kind of an anti-police measure. It is not. It is a way of looking at public safety in a much more holistic manner. The role of police in our society is to ticket or arrest individuals allegedly involved in crimes, gather evidence to aid in their prosecution, and anything else beyond that is what project managers like to refer to as mission creep. Over time, more and more burden has been placed on our police without asking whether police are, in fact, the right people to take on those other tasks. I would posit that for, for most social services, including addressing mental health crises, they are not. Shifting even a modest amount of funding from police to allow for the creation of alternative programs such as mental health crisis, mobile teams, community dispute resolution, and more fundamentally, addressing things like joblessness, homelessness, chemical dependency, healthcare, and other social service needs, will go a lot further to improve community safety by preventing or more constructively addressing the issues that lead to crime. Police are reactive. They don’t prevent crime, they address it after the fact, and we can definitely do better than that. What people are positing and asking for is a reduction of five percent, but because this mayor’s budget increases the police budget by two-point-eight percent, what they’re really asking for is a two-point-two percent reduction. And I think that’s a very modest reduction. We’re talking about two, I’m sorry, excuse me, nine-point-two-two-five million dollars that could be shifted into alternate solutions to public safety, and our organization and myself support this strongly. We also do support the, the call for more money for public, for public housing and for housing needs in general, but particularly, it’s time to think about public safety in a very different way. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-nine, Renate.
Good evening, Councilmembers, and Mayor Frye. My name is Renata Willer, and I live in Ward Six on Twenty-Fifth Avenue. I’m here with Reclaim the Block. I support divesting five percent from MPD’s budget and reinvesting this money into racially equitable, affordable housing and other community-led safety programs. I work as a case manager at a nonprofit that helps to house people who have a disability and who have been long-term homeless. Our struggle to find affordable housing continues to increase. I’m tired of telling my clients that though they, they deserve more, they need to endure or make do in substandard apartments or with landlords that take months to fix things simply because we need those landlords. It’s no longer a question or conversation about choosing a place with a lower rent so they have money left over for a bus pass or for toilet paper. It’s now a conversation about how we tweak the bills or squeeze the blood out of the budget so they can scrape out another year in their apartment. This budget would double funding for a community collaborative and advancement program at MPD. MPD has, has had a hundred and fifty years to build trust in our city and clearly hasn’t succeeded. People who experience homelessness are more likely to be arrested, convicted, and people with a record are more likely to be homeless. No amount of PR money is going to convince my clients that calling the police is a safe or good option. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty, Scott. Then Juanita, Lex, and Barb.
Hello, my name is Scott Engel. I live at thirty-seven forty-eight Nineteenth Avenue South. I’m a board member on the Our Streets Minneapolis Organization. I’m here tonight to talk about winter sidewalk snow and ice clearance. The, the city, over the years, has not done a great job of ensuring that our sidewalks are clear of ice and snow. And I think using the, the city’s budget as a way to make that change. I think we’ve had a lot of discussion about the, well, what we’re asking for is some things like improved corner clearance, bus stop clearance, helping people, there, people like me that are disabled. It’s hard to travel when the sidewalks aren’t cleared, and the city hasn’t done a great job of making sure that the whole comprehensive sidewalk network is cleared, seniors, children, people that don’t drive. So I’m asking that you, maybe this year, something more can be done and keep building on that, year after year, learn. Ask your Public Works Department to sort of learn from what happened the previous winter and continue to work towards an actual walkable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-one, Juanita. Then Lex, Barb are next.
I’m Juanita Johnson, and I’m supporting the Make Homes Happen and the mayor’s proposed investments for affordable housing. I am here as Minneapolis resident of forty-nine years and most notably testifying as a Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity homeowner for the last twenty-three of those years in the foul neighborhood. In nineteen ninety-four, we were a growing family of four with one-income, one-bedroom home. At seven dollars an hour, we were living paycheck to paycheck like most, most others around us. What set us apart that year is we were chosen as a family to be homeowners through Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. Prior to applying, we looked at houses and stressed daily over finances, safe locations, and the American dream. Homeownership through Habitat provided far more than affordable housing. Affordable housing for us meant safety, shelter, and the ability to reassure our children that they were going to be grounded and not going to be homeless like many of their friends throughout school. This stability made for individual growth and success. Of our five children, we have a college grad working full-time in research, one who successfully owned his own community business, a full-time supervisor, a senior in college on a full academic scholarship, and an electrician apprentice. Individual growth and success was not limited to just our children. It extended to me and my husband as well. This consistency allowed my husband, who had an unstable upbringing, the opportunity and stability to continue to work at one place for the last twenty-five years while successfully paying on an affordable mortgage, in turn allowing me to stay home with our children. When our youngest entered the first grade, I went back to college, and in two thousand and six, I graduated with a Bachelor of Science from the University of Minnesota. Without affordable housing, this would not have been possible. There are so many hurdles that can prevent success. Affordable housing should not be one of them. You can make a difference by supporting Make Homes Happen. Stability and affordable housing paves the way to family stability and a sense of permanence, allowing for future growth and education of the entire family, where they will thrive and succeed together. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-two is Lex.
Good evening, everyone. It’s good to see you tonight. My name is Lex Haran. I live at two-nine-two-five Seventeenth Avenue South. I’m here with Reclaim the Block, and I’m ready for our city to move five percent of the police budget and, out of the police budget and into housing and violence prevention and all the other things that actually keep folks in our communities safe. When I go to meetings in my neighborhood in East Phillips, right off Lake Street, I often hear folks in my neighborhood who are concerned about what’s happening where we live. They’re worried about sex work that’s happening on our block, they’re worried about drug sales, they’re worried about safety and about violence. And I also hear folks talk about how for forty years, the police have chased these issues from block to block, that one year it may be closer to my home, and then the next year it may be closer to somebody else’s. But what this tells me is that our model of policing is a problem not only because of the violence and racism that have always been a part of it, but also because it’s just not the best tool that we have to stop the issues that are happening in our neighborhoods. But the thing is, in my neighborhood, there are so many folks working so hard on so few resources to do the things that really keep people safe. So in my neighborhood, there are folks like Southside Harm Reduction, Natives Against Heroin, the Minnesota Trans Health Coalition, who are hustling all the time to stop overdoses, to connect with folks dealing with addiction. There are members of groups like Engelenos, who we’ve heard about tonight, who are working to keep people in their homes, which ultimately keeps our neighborhood safer because neighbors have the chance to build with each other and, and keep each other safe over time. There are domestic violence organizations that are- are helping people make safety plans and get out of violent situations and figure out a path forward. And I don't want to see these folks keep begging for crumbs and competing with each other for a few thousand dollars. I also trust the expertise of public health experts who are thinking about how do we prevent violence instead of continue to respond to it. So I want to see ideas like the Office of Violence Prevention created and funded at $1 million, not $25,000. I want to, I believe that we need to ensure that the folks doing this kind of work have the money they need to do it, not on a shoestring. They have proven their value to our communities over and over again. MPD's track record is much less trustworthy, and I believe it's time to shift our resources accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 53, Barb.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Barbara Janetta, and I live at 3731 Garfield and Ward 8. I'm here to speak in favor of the $40 million included in the budget for affordable housing this evening. I work at Alliance Housing, and we're a member of the Make Homes Happen Coalition. Alliance's work makes it possible for individuals and families to create homes for themselves, especially families with very low incomes and with blemishes on their past due to poor credit, evictions, or criminal convictions. We own about 500 units of affordable housing, and it isn't enough. We field 10 to 15 calls per day of people looking for housing. Because the rental market is so expensive, tight, and restrictive, there are few other places to refer people. So we maintain an interest list of completed applications. As of yesterday, we had a list of 300 single adults who called up to a year and a half ago and 170 families. So the $40 million is a great start, and we hope the city can find a long-term, dedicated source to sustain it next year and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 54, Level. Then Bob, Zed, and Wyatt. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Okay, I just got two, oh, I'm too close there. I just got two minutes to speak about this. I know I'm not the smartest person in this room, okay? I might be the dumbest person in this room, okay? But I can tell the difference between somebody saying we need public housing and not so much police force than we need police force and no public housing. And I don't care, you know, you can be three, four, five years old. A kid could tell that. So that's all I got to say for today, okay? And I hope I see all you guys again. Thank y'all for listening to us.
Sounds pretty smart to me.
I don't need two minutes for that. And thank y'all.
Very smart. Thank you. 55 is Bob. Bob Kroll. 56 is Zed. Then Wyatt, then Natasha.
That's pretty funny. All right. My name is Zed, and I live at 2437 11th Avenue South, Minneapolis. Last time I came here and spoke, I have horrible anxiety, so this is really difficult, and so, but I'm passionate about this, and so I'm up here, and I know there's been so many people here speaking about something they care about, so I really appreciate you listening to all of us. The last time I was here, I talked about the fact that I grew up in poverty. The other day, my sister called me sobbing because she can't handle working full-time hours and making only $11 an hour and going to school. She can't remember who she even is when she's working this much. No one in my family had money to help us with college, so even with scholarships, she has to work full-time to afford rent at her one-bedroom apartment where she rents the couch. She cried, and I cried with her, and she kept saying, "I know I have passion and drive, and I want to make a difference, but I can't feel it anymore." The system is broken, and it's oppressing so many and stripping them of their humanity. This kind of life is unsafe. My sister's physical and mental health is at risk, and we need to invest money in our vulnerable communities for their safety and their quality of life. That's why I'm here with Reclaim the Block. The Minneapolis Police Department has proven the entire 150 years that it's been here that they do not give us safety. They give us violence, fear, and death. We cannot, why cannot? We divest 5% from our police budget to make such a large impact to our community and to our safety. So I'm here with Reclaim the Block again, and I support divesting 5% from our police budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 57, Wyatt. Then Natasha, and then Andrew.
Hello, everyone. My name is Wyatt, and I live at 2437 11th Avenue South, and I'm here in support of Reclaim the Block, and I support divesting 5% of the police budget to go towards our communities. I'm a queer and trans person who is also living with a mental illness, and I know firsthand that mental health crises happen and that they are traumatic events in and of themselves. I know if I was ever in a situation where I needed help because of my mental health, the last person I want to trust my safety in is an armed police officer. I want to be taken care of by a medical professional who is trained and familiar with how to help people during mental health crises. I don't believe that police officers should be responsible for responding to people experiencing mental health crises. They do not make me feel safe, and I know that I'm not alone in feeling that way. That is why I support divesting 5% from the police budget to go towards our communities and creating safer places for people like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 58, Natasha.
When I started, I said, "Good evening. My name is Natasha Vianueva. I live at 1826 LaSalle Avenue in the Stevens Square Loring Heights neighborhood." And I was inspired to come here and speak to you all tonight because of the bravery that I see demonstrated constantly by the United Renters for Justice. I've been organizing with them since 2012, and they are forced, due to the broken system that many people have mentioned here this evening, to fight and struggle for stable shelter that they deserve and the permanence that they have earned in their communities. These are people that are creating the desirable neighborhoods that we have now in Minneapolis that many people want to develop and many people want to sell to the highest bidder. I'm really pleased to see how many people from my neighborhood are here this evening. I'm not surprised, though, because it's filled with renters. It's vibrant, diverse, and it's currently affordable. And, you know, renters care for it, and renters comprise this neighborhood. And although it's currently affordable for working people such as myself and, you know, a really diverse group of folks, rents are rapidly rising, and I fear that gentrification and luxury developments, as well as a lack of affordable renter protections that we've heard mentioned here tonight, will soon make it inaccessible to me and as well as the people that have transformed it into the unique and desirable place it is today. So I'm really proud of all the organizations and individuals that have come here tonight to touch on a lot of solutions to this issue such as rent control, just cause eviction, decommodifying housing. And I quickly just want to echo two points that Jennifer touched on earlier, which are representation for every renter in court and also reconfiguring regulatory services. These should be funded by Reclaim the Block's proposal to reallocate money from Minneapolis Police Department to affordable housing stock. And the reason I want to touch on these two points in particular is because I have been in housing court. I'm assuming you all have been there. If you haven't, just sit there for a day. It's an eviction machine, and it shouldn't be, and we need to stop it. And we need representation for every single person in court. I know you've taken a step in the correct direction by piloting, giving more money to legal aid, because they consistently collaborate with Engelenos, but we need more. $150,000 is like chump change for this, like, 100 people a day that are evicted from their homes in housing court. It's a great start for a few lucky renters, but it's not the change that we need. We went there, and a group of about 15 renters stood up in solidarity with renters that were facing eviction, and the referee's eyeballs almost like popped out of their head like they had never seen people actually standing up for renters there before. And regulatory services, I wanted to touch on that point because, you know, we talk a lot about naturally occurring affordable housing, but I think that's a misnomer because the reason that any housing in our city is affordable is because it's neglected, and it's often filled with vulnerable populations, people with low incomes, people of color, and their options are limited. But the options for landlords to neglect them and charge exorbitant rents, 30% or more of their income, are many, and they don't have to fulfill their responsibilities to tenants. And so we need money for, you know, them to be able to check for lead and help landlords abate it. We need them to have money to fix the black mold that I've seen growing on renters' walls when I go to visit them, and, you know, bedbugs and huge issues that these people have, gushing water out of their pipes. And you wonder, like, how could people live there? But it's their home, and they want to fight for it, and so I think we all should do that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker 59, Andrew.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Beeman. I live at 1117 West 26th Street on Ward 10. And as someone who does drive to work every day, I can confirm life is better with the bike lanes. So thank you all for those. And so I'm speaking tonight in support of divesting 5% from MPD's budget. And we all know, and we all up here have heard before, that budgets are a moral document. And so with a moral document comes some moral questions. And one for, I want everyone to think and ponder about is, you know, where does crime come from? Is crime due to there just being bad people roaming around our city who are maliceful and looking for ways to hurt people? Or does crime come from people who have been exhausted out of other options, and they're looking for ways to survive in a system that may not really account for them or care about them? And so as we look forward and we look at what we're spending our money on, are we spending our money on resources that are treating people like good people that just need access to things? Are we treating them like people that need to be rounded up and caught? And so I am also a public health worker, and I can let you know that, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so let's think about some of that preventative work we can do. How much preventative work is there to be done around making sure that people's basic material needs are met, that everyone in the city has a guaranteed, safe, dry place to sleep every night, or food? You know, as someone who teaches kids about consent and healthy relationships, how often is our city actually supporting resources to help end domestic violence? And so, you know, we all are familiar with how much money the police get out of our budget. I think reducing that by 5% and investing that money into butter and not guns is a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on speaker 60, Paul. We are about halfway through our list of registered speakers. So Paul Williams is the next speaker. 61 is Yolanda. Then we would have Michelle and Paul. And if Paul Williams comes back, then we'll find you.
My name is Yolanda Hare. I live at 2204 10th Avenue South, but I grew up in North Minneapolis and lived there until about a month ago. I'm here with Reclaim the Block and Black Visions Collective in support of their call to invest in communities and divest 5% from MPD's budget. I work at a small charter school as an advocate that intervenes when students are in crisis and builds plans that supports them. Having an advocate instead of a security officer is part of our school's investment in meeting our kids' emotional needs instead of punishing them for our failure to do so. SROs are a simple fix to what to do about problem behavior. They're not a good fix because they don't fix the problem. They move it. They don't assess students' needs that aren't being met that cause the behavior. They don't teach more functional behavior. They move kids from place to place. Our school's investment in solving problems and not just moving them provides the perfect analogy for the choice that the council is facing. We're in the middle of the third anniversary of the occupation of the 4th Precinct, but the racist and violent tactics that resulted in the death of Jamar Clark all those years ago are still harming our communities. To fix this problem, this budget proposes $6 million in increase to what amounts to the PR wing of the MPD so that residents feel better about the egregious and racist abuses of powers that are happening. When the good fix would be increased investments in affordable housing, mental health and addiction service, and actually dealing with the ways our current institutions are systematizing racial disparities. It's not complicated. The safest communities aren't the ones with the most police. They are the ones with the most resources, the ones that solve the problems that they face and not just move them into prisons and parole. Let's invest in good solutions, please.
Thank you. Speaker 62, Michelle. Then Paul, then Dawn.
Good evening, council. I'm Michelle Wenderlich. I am a resident of Ward 8. I am also a, I'm here with Community Power and also with Reclaim the Block. I'm a PhD candidate looking into how public ownership and democratic control can help cities fight climate change, and it also works for a lot of other things, too. So I want to thank you for restoring the funding that was originally taken away from the Clean Energy Partnership funding dollars in the first version of the budget. And that's important because it funds new programming to lower energy costs for residents and working towards our climate goals and also centering equity. And hopefully, there's a lot more directed funding for workforce development around that, which has been a little bit lacking in previous attempts. I would ask that this $900,000 is made ongoing and in a sequestered fund so that we can use it transparently and see that it is used for its original purpose and isn't something that we should have to fight for every year. So that's one big thing. A staff direction for itemized accounting would also help in this. And another thing would be to end the misuse of $375 million to pay for Excel's Renewable Connect program, which is electricity that's at a premium going to a corporation rather than a city could have an option to spend less money and have that going towards community-directed energy. So advocating for getting away from that program as soon as possible to have a more equitable energy system or where our electricity dollars are going. I also want to support Reclaim the Block's demands of divesting 5% from MPD's budget to fund our communities and develop a comprehensive, alternative community safety program that's not based on reinforcing racial disparities in housing, education, and economic opportunity, as they have shown again and again, the MPD is a poor fit for providing safety and community, and there are many other organizations that can do this better. I also want to also support the Tenant Bill of Rights and city-owned housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker 63, Paul.
Hello, my name's Paul Bosman. I live in Longfellow neighborhood with my wife and when they're not at the U, my two goddaughters, who wanted to be Minneapolis police officers. Some of y'all have met my goddaughters. They were exposed to bad behavior by Minneapolis police officers, and one of them decided to complain. The other one verified that it happened. They were subject to retaliation. We tried doing what we could. We talked to the sergeant who was in charge. That didn't work. We tried talking to the commander who was in charge of the youth program they were part of or the CSO program. That didn't work. We complained to IA. That didn't work. We ended up complaining to the Community Policing Review Committee. Sorry, the acronym just fled my mind. OPCR, thank you, which you don't hear a lot of snaps for because nobody really loves them. But right now, that's the only mechanism we have for giving feedback to the police department. That, and you're voting on their budget tomorrow morning. So if we're going to give feedback to the police department, they have a couple of good investigators, according to my wife and goddaughters. They've got a couple of really bright young lawyers who are very hardworking from my talking to them. But they have done a great job this last year getting, sending people into police departments to make complaints and finding out that the police department's really good at keeping people from making complaints. So the police department's had to change its policy and listen to the complaints of the people. Now, the committee can its policy and listen to the complaints of the people. Now, the committee can listen to three of those complaints and investigate them every month. There are hundreds of complaints. They don't have enough investigators. They have two. They have a couple of lawyers. And this is the only mechanism for giving feedback to the police department and city government right now. And you guys voting on the budget. They wanted one more person, one more investigator to help them go through these voluminous complaints that they'd help generate by getting people heard at the police department. And the mayor said no. Right now, this budget cuts the Civil Rights Department that includes OPCR by $156,000 and gives the police $5 million. The CSO program alone, as part of recruitment, spends that kind of money to pay for recruitment into the police department. We can cut that in half and start giving the voice back to the people, even a little one, to give feedback back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 64, Dawn, then Kathy, then Glenda. Dawn Austin-Saw. Okay. Well, we'll do speaker 65. Kathy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Bender, council members. I'm Kathy Wetzel-Mastel with PRG. I also live in Ward 12, and I'm a proud member of Make Homes Happen. I want to thank the mayor for the robust investments in affordable housing in the draft budget. I especially appreciate that those investments are targeted along the continuum. This is important to focus on the continuum because statewide, there are 27,000 households that occupy the lowest rent units, publicly subsidized units that could afford homeownership. PRG has relied on funding programs, including programs from all levels of government. In Minneapolis, that's primarily Minneapolis Homes and the Home Ownership Works Program to address just a wide myriad of issues. I'm going to share an example of a recently completed project at 1426 Penn. It was vacant and boarded since 2012. The duplex had lost its grandfathered nonconforming use. PRG acquired it for rehab and rehabbed it into a large, single-family home utilizing a Northside contractor of color. It was built in 1922. It's now ready for its next 100 years of service. But even better, it's being purchased next month by a household of 10 coming out of our partnership with Minneapolis Public Housing. This family will now have access to the primary tool that low and middle-income Americans use to build wealth, and another low-income family will have access to a very scarce resource, which is public housing. And we're also narrowing the homeownership gap in the process. More of this work needs to be done, and the funding in the mayor's budget is a great and important start, but it is only a start. Make Homes Happen urges you to work with the mayor and city staff in the coming year to identify $50 million a year in long-term, local, dedicated, and flexible funding to support affordable housing preservation, production, and tenant protections over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 66, Glenda. Then we'll have Jerry, James, and Sean.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Eldridge, and I live at 1355 Nicollet Avenue in Minneapolis. I am in support of affordable housing, and I was formerly a resident at Alliance Housing, which is through Aon. I stayed there for almost eight years, and I come from a background of mental illness, me and my sister and my mom. So it's like a family history thing. And I struggled raising my daughters through mental illness and trying to hold a job, but I managed to do it somehow, piece together, family helping me out. And so I want to speak in support of affordable housing. It's very, very important. Trying to juggle mental illness and a job, and then you're unemployed for some time. But it's very hard, but I managed to piece it together. Coming from the South Side of Chicago and experiencing also affordable housing where it wasn't there, it's just an ongoing thing that's been going around for a long time. And I, my hats go off to Alliance and Aon for helping me get stable. I'm now a student of social work, trying to get into Metro State University and the social work degree program. And so I'm just trying to help others come up from either their plight because it is a struggle. It is a fight, but it is real and it is possible. But they do need a lot more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 67, Jerry.
In reference to the police, I recommend again, from the Civilian Review Council years ago when we flooded this place with this, it only failed because those in the DFL and sitting up here stabbed us in the back because they did not give it subpoena power. Also was part of the group for mediation. For four or five years or more, everybody did it, and then you know what the mayor did. So why would it not be a good idea for you guys to find out what was right with both, what was wrong with both, merge the two, and then take their business rather than always trying to create something new, which will waste our time because you already know. To take money away from the police department right now, where's some of you people been? Went down there just a couple of months ago when them two boys got killed on Sunday. Yesterday, I'm at a funeral since people are reclaiming the block. Where were y'all at yesterday around noon? One of the largest families in North Minneapolis lost a young man to drugs. Now is not the time for that. Show me the groups that you have right now that will take the place of the police. I'm on record for 20-some years for speaking against police brutality, but you've never heard me talk about we don't need the police because you all know just like I know that poverty breeds violence. And poverty in North Minneapolis and South Minneapolis amongst our people is out of this world. When you talk about housing, it amazes me. You got probably 200 more bacon houses right now, all these different lodges, and we bring churches, African-American churches have gone to the city and the county to ask them, "Don't give us nothing. Sell it to us. Let us provide homes for our people," and nothing at this particular point. I ride around here, I see Habitat, I see PRG, but I don't see my people working. But yet, we supposed to sit down and sing kumbaya. When are you all going to get real about African-American issues? Matter of fact, I suggest to you, you won't. You know why? We need to give you our own agenda. We need to tell you what's important for us. And just because somebody can flood something with a lot of people talking about reclaim, that don't mean they talking for all of us. Most of y'all know who some of us. Come talk about it. But no, better than that, we gonna give y'all our agenda on what we expect out of you all and get out of our way. Please stop loving us to death.
Thank you. Speaker 68, James, then 69, Sean.
What's up? IWD, stand up. All ready. Individuals with dreams. Now, that's the homeless right there. But they're individuals with dreams, African-Americans. It's amazing how we talking about a budget that I don't think we have enough information on to try to take away from without figuring out how to put back what we already got going on right now. 55% of the homeless in Hennepin County is African-American. Yet, we are the only ward that gave all the money everywhere else but homelessness. 55%, but in Ward 4 and 5, we didn't give a dollar to us homelessness. How are you supposed to have a dream when you not setting up the plan for them to make it there? We live in the date, and 2018, we have a 2040 plan. That means that the homelessness that exists today was established by the plan in 1998. I was six years old. I was drinking liquor by that time. My mother and father was in affordable housing, Section 8. I grew up with that. We never had a problem with that. But we have real problems in our communities that rather we got police or whatever, the real problem is the fact that whenever we got somebody in our neighborhood willing to do something, we got people talking for our community. That's not even in our community. I'm on the block. I telling anybody that say that they from the block. I just got out of prison four years ago. It's a spit in the face to see somebody say that they reclaiming something and haven't talked to me. And I know y'all know me. Because too many people do. And if you haven't, like Jaycee said, allow me to reintroduce myself. I take guns from people on the block. I don't care about a button. I've been hearing clicks all my life. I'm not going against the police like I'm not going against my block. I'm for safety and protection. There is no safety nor protection in none of the plans for African-Americans in the 2019 plan or in the 2040 plan. How dare you do that without us? How dare y'all pay so much attention to the goals that you miss out on the values? I just came to say that I'm with the NAACP state chair, but that doesn't defy me. I rep that when I want to sometime. But I'm James Badoo Il. Il is one who creates with the wisdom of Allah God, whatever you want to call it. And I just came to say that for all of y'all that know me, now you know where I'm at, and I'm coming. We coming. African-Americans, descendants of the slaves, been the only ones left out out of everything. I have no, I help people not get deported. I don't know nothing about that, but I did that. Can't nobody say I don't put in my work. So I would die in the grave than to sit around and not say something. If anybody else come from reclaiming the block again, we might have to send it off. I had to sit here and wait. My auntie right now got to speak. That's African-American. We going through it. Sit down. We gotta talk right now. Don't get back up here again.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Number 69 is Sean. Welcome.
Evening. My name's Sean Leyden. I'm from the Whittier neighborhood and a renter there. I'm very proud to be speaking in support of the city's proposed Stable Homes/Stable Schools Initiative. And at a time when municipal governments are working to close racial disparities, our schools, our city, our parks, we need to find ways to partner together, to work together to achieve our shared goals. And I'm a little alarmed to hear that there is some hesitation around this proposal based on the idea that this is the role of the federal government. And I just, at a time when the federal government is abandoning communities like ours, it's time that our municipal governments stand up, wrap our arms around our students in our public schools. Worked at Jefferson School, racially isolated school, a lot of homeless highly mobile students there. Homes are a fundamental part of success in our schools. And the city government getting into rental subsidies is a critical step that we have to take in these extraordinary times. So I recognize this is going outside of the norms, and we oftentimes want to talk about capital because it's easy, because it's a one-time investment. I applaud the mayor's budget for taking a courageous step to put this forward at a time when it's desperately needed. Our students, I think you heard from the superintendent earlier, I'm sure he let folks know, over 8% of our students at any given day are homeless, over 10% facing homelessness or high mobility in our public schools. We're asking you to partner with us to take this critical step to address this fundamental issue. When we talk about racial disparities, this is a major part of what we can do together to address these that we've all, I think, gone around the city saying that we believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 70 is Tabitha, then Joanne, then Sarah, then Joan. Excuse me, just, yeah, I just want to share that Councilmember Cunningham had to leave. He wasn't feeling well, but he is going to be watching this live, which he absolutely will be doing. So it's just how Councilmember Cunningham is.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President Bender. So, good evening, Council. My name is Tabitha Montgomery, and I have the pleasure to serve the Potters Park Neighborhood Association as its executive director. From numerous community voices and dozens of community partner relationships, the association aims to support and champion private and public decisions and investments that look to improve equity in housing and economic development as well as holistic safety. It is in this regard that I aim to speak to you tonight. PPNA actively partners with the South Minneapolis Public Safety Coalition, and just this year, we pursued and obtained funding from the city's Community Collaborative Safety Strategies Initiative. And although we saw great benefit from this effort, we believe resources through Public Works will greatly improve, and I should back up, incremental resources through Public Works will greatly improve safety and livability in our community. So imagine my delight when I came across the Public Works Department mission that states it aims to be effective stewards of public infrastructure and provide valued city services that contribute firstly to public safety, economic vitality, and neighborhood livability in Minneapolis. I was thrilled. And it is with that in mind that I asked the council to consider allocating 10% of what appears to be a projected $20 million surplus in the department budget to support an increase in foundational tools like better lighting, increased trash pickup, and restrictive parking along commercial corridors like East Lake Street in South Minneapolis that experience a disproportionate number of livability crimes throughout the year. Given the department's mission, I am confident the Director of Public Works will welcome an opportunity to work with this progressive council to close some of the inequity in this regard. I can't imagine that at least a phone call and/or a conversation would be not welcomed to address how should we, how can we collectively reallocate this $20 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 71, Joanne.
Good evening, Council President Bender, council members, Mayor Fry. I'm Joanne Kaufman. I live in the 13th Ward, and I'm also executive director of the Warehouse District Business Association. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the mayor's proposal to civilianize eight positions in the Minneapolis Police Department. We feel strongly that this action will allow eight officers to return to police work, the work that they're highly trained for, and make more officers available on the street to improve public safety as well as offer better public outreach by the police department. We fully support the $929,000 the mayor is requesting to civilianize these positions as well as the $179,000 to provide squads to these officers, and we are opposed to any cuts to the Minneapolis Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. 72, Sarah. Welcome.
I'm Sarah Larson. I live in First Ward in Wade Park. I work for the Landon Group. On behalf of Make Homes Happen, I encourage you to allocate the $40 million to affordable housing initiatives as outlined in the mayor's budget. I've been producing affordable housing for 20 years in my career. My entire career, I've never experienced such an outpouring of support for affordable housing development. So thank you to everyone who's raised this issue, especially during your campaigns. However, moral support is not enough. There must be actual resources to match. Capital subsidy is needed, so is rental subsidy. I applaud the mayor's budget for not only increasing the capital funding but providing rental subsidy through the Stable Homes/Stable School Initiative. We cannot do things the same way and have the same rules and expect things to change. We know the need is there. Just last week, I was talking to a student who I tutor at Edison. His dad works full-time, and he raises his three sons alone. So for years, the four of them shared a one-bedroom apartment in Northeast because that's all he could afford. The student was talking to me last week about his goal of graduating in the spring and then attending community college, and he wants to find a place to live on his own. He asked me, knowing what I do, "Sarah, will you help me find a place to live?" And it breaks my heart because I know the answer. I know how few units are affordable to people at his income level. I know how few units we as an industry are producing every year, how few are produced in Minneapolis. And I know how limited rental subsidy is and how long that waitlist is. So, we in the Homes for All Partners Coalition have delivered for results for years. We've delivered them with limited resources and limited support. So please allow us to start to truly address this crisis with actual meaningful support and meaningful resources. Thank you.
Thank you. 73, Joan. Oh, 73 is Joan. Joan Wilsher. Please come back if we've missed Joan. 74 is Melissa, then Julia, then Marcus.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Melissa Newman. I'm a Northside homeowner in the McKinley
I'm a Northside homeowner in the McKinley neighborhood. I stand before you today asking you to include in the two thousand and nineteen budget corrective solutions for current homeowners that have been affected by damaging decisions of your former constituents. I would like to call attention to not just any homeowners, but homeowners that have been holding down financial hardships and distresses that comes with owning a home in Minneapolis's Northside. First time minority homebuyers were excited and made emotional purchases, have been misled into accommodating inflated gap mortgages that they didn't qualify for. Mortgages issued from the City of Minneapolis to fill the gap of affordable homeownership. Currently, per CPAD, there is twenty-nine homeowners, fifty-six mortgage loans owned by the City of Minneapolis. Most properties carry two to seven liens. As of October of two thousand and seven, the principal balances of these mortgages were eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. All of these loans carry two and three percent interest rate and balloon with, with the balloon after thirty years when the house is sold. Essentially, City Minneapolis has invested in our properties and is an acting parent or landlord with attached clauses and rental restrictions. The city is reaping benefits as you all, as you have all the assets and we have all the liabilities. We have been stripped of true homeownership. We are glorified renters. Many Northside homeowners have been dealing with the devastation of these mortgages right before, during, and after the height of the mortgage collapse. The money for these gap mortgages were funneled through the developer of Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation, and inflated prices were allowed, prices that didn't fit the Northside then or now. I am twelve years into my home and I am still upside down and underwater. I believe that proper corrective solutions for these twenty-nine homeowners would grant forgiveness in full of city-owned gap mortgages, principal and interest. There's a plethora of other issues that are caused a domino effect by these types of predatory lending programs. I know that the homeowner, that I know a homeowner that's currently in her second year of Chapter thirteen bankruptcy with the partial lien stripping on some of these mortgages. After the bankruptcy, she will still owe the city forty-two thousand dollars with interest on top of her first mortgage. A decade later, oh, excuse me, this homeownership recycling epidemic will be repeated with the Minneapolis Buy, Build, and Rehab Program. And even a decade later, big businesses with Haven Brook scooping up our neighborhoods' equities. We need to preserve homeownerships for all Northside families and protect the sustainability of homeowners while providing effective solutions and traditional benefits of our owning our home. I would like to lean on you for some assistance in this budget, seeking relief for homeowners that are holding on with this bag for all of this time. We've been in a lot of council members' offices and the former mayor's office as well, and our words have fallen on deaf ears. And we are tired. We, there's probably even some homeowners out here now that have still lingering with this outstanding debt that have, that have foreclosed on their homes already. And I appreciate your time and efforts. And Philippe is my council member, so if anyone needs to speak with me, he has my direct cell phone number. Thank you. Oh, and so does Jeremiah.
Thank you. Speaker seventy-five is Julia, then Marcus, then Devin.
Hi, my name is Julia Brokaw. I'm a research ecologist and graduate student at the University of Minnesota. I'm also an organizer with Science for the People, which is an organization that recognizes that science and justice and community needs are inextricably linked. And I support the investment in affordable housing instead of covering up police violence. More police does not mean less crime. And if you want equity and justice, you have to fund it. I also support the ongoing funding and transparency for the franchise fee and the plan to get off Community Connect for more equitable energy that supports community needs. I'm also a member of the Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committee, and I support the vote from Monday for the municipal ID, but in order for that to be effective and inclusive, it needs adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker seventy-six is Marcus. Well, there you are. Welcome. Then Devin, then Alyssa, then Katie.
So, as many folks know, I'm Marcus Mills, out of Marcy Homes, wear a lot of hats. I'll be cycling through them in my remarks. So, first of all, as a large, shaggy black man who's known police harassment, even here, just outside City Hall, under the suspicion that I might be homeless or otherwise undesirable, a mindset we need to change, I resonate with a great many of the concerns raised here tonight. As an neighborhood official who has had myriad conversations and meetings with precinct leaders and commanders who know exactly how to guide police efforts, to work alongside communities, to serve our communities rather than terrorize them, I suggest we seek them out, forge partnerships with our communities, and most of all, listen. Of course, I offer myself to that effort. I did come here tonight to thank and to suggest, to thank Mayor Frye and the council for dedication to public and affordable housing and the proposal to add neighborhood funding to the city's five-year financial plan, but also to remind the city both in the present and the future that we should be funding both neighborhoods and our various non-geographically-defined communities, realize that investments in both of these promote partnerships that help address many of the matters talked about here this evening. I'm also here to thank the mayor and council for their backing of the Clean Energy Partnership and the restoration of funding for innovative energy solutions derived from the franchise fee increase. My suggestion is to ensure that this entire investment in our energy future be made ongoing, that it remain transparent, and directed towards lowering resident energy bills and the fight against the climate crisis. And last, I stand with the Inclusive Financing Coalition, and I renew community power's commitment to assist the city in making the most of the possibilities offered by inclusive financing, including freeing up affordable housing dollars to create more affordable housing and clean, affordable public transportation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Speaker seventy-seven, Devin. Devin Hogan. We'll welcome you back if Devin comes back.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Schufman. I have lived on the twenty-nine-hundred block of Fifteenth Avenue South in Midtown Phillips for about five years. Drug sales and use, theft, and sexual violence are regular occurrences on our block, and I'm still here to ask you to divest money from the MPD budget. Every police intervention has only temporarily shifted this activity to another block. Police do not make my community safer. Police bring more guns and violence into my neighborhood. Police presence is a threat to my neighbors of color, many of whom do not speak English as a first language. I do not want more police. I do not want expanded funding for the MPD. I want the city to invest in community strategies that help us transform our neighborhoods into places that support all people. I want the city to invest more money in affordable housing, in communities of color, in harm-reduction drug interventions, and in accessibility. I support divesting at least five percent of the police budget to fund community-loved initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Seventy-nine, Katie. Katie Yanaki. Come back to you. Eighty, Shruti.
Good evening. Good night. I'm Shruti Kamisati. I'm an organizer with Parks and Power at Hope Community. I'm also a community member of South Minneapolis, Thirty-first and Tenth Ave. I'm here in very clear support of Reclaim the Block's demands of divesting five percent of the police budget. I honestly do not think that the police work. They are an outdated system that are predicated on violence against Black, Indigenous, and communities of color. I have always had terrible experiences with the police. I think they need to go. I think we can do better. I just, there's been so many people who've spoken tonight about violence and like harm-reduction, about affordable housing, about safety, and I think we can, like, let's put our money there. Like, let's put our money where our mouth is and like not in the police. Like, the police are unnecessary. Like, don't do their job. Their job is to kill people. I think we should like fund community safety programs, and I think we should invest in affordable housing. Housing will definitely keep people safe for queer, trans, people who are formerly incarcerated, people who like are harassed by the police. I think we need to divest five percent of MPD's budget, and I think we also need to like do some sort of participatory budget process because I don't really like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Eighty-one, Sheila. Then Marcus, Mary, and Todd.
Thank you, council members. My name is Sheila Nejad. I live in the Ninth Ward, and I'm here with Reclaim the Block. So yesterday, I was updating our Reclaim the Block Demands document that many of you have seen, and I had to update it because MPD had killed another person since when we first wrote the document. So I am here to remind you that allocating this budget, looking at these line items, is not just some abstract process, right? It has real consequences. Consequences for people like Travis Jordan, Thurman Blevins, Jamar Clark, Fong Lee, Justine Demond, and a hundred and seventy more people since two thousand. So can I get a mic check? Can I get a mic check? We need you to divest from the police because Black lives... ...matter. Because trans lives... ...matter. Because Native lives... ...matter. We need you to fund communities, not cops. Fund what? Communities, not cops. Fund what? Communities, not cops. Fund what? Communities, not cops. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker eighty-two, Marcus. Marcus Halli. Okay. Eighty-three is Mary.
Hi, my name's Mary. I grew up near Lake Harriet in South Minneapolis. I attended South High School. I currently live in Powderhorn Park neighborhood, and I work in a clinic on the North Side. I'm here solidly with the Reclaim the Block initiative in support, and I want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into me being here today, that's been done by other people. So I thank them for their efforts. I am here solidly to ask that you fund our communities rather than more cops by divesting five percent from MPD's budget. Growing up, I was taught that the best way to stay out of trouble was if you dressed nicely, spoke eloquently, and followed the rules. I learned that this wasn't, that that is not the case, that does not work for anyone or everybody, unfortunately. People still get killed no matter what they look like, no matter how they're dressed, no matter how many degrees they have attached to their name. As I said, I live in the Powderhorn Park neighborhood. I, it's near the Chicago Lake Transit Station, where transit police and MPD seem to have a constant presence. Seeing police cars go by, seeing officers questioning or arresting people at the bus shelter or on Thirty-first in front of my house does not make me feel more safe. I worry that if I were to call the police to my house, I would be endangering myself, my housemates, and my neighbors more than helping them. I work in healthcare. Every day, I see people that are choosing between money for life-saving medications that keep them away from chronic conditions, out of the crowded ERs, choosing between those medications and their housing, supporting their children's education, food on the table, you name it. I ask that we really support our communities by eliminating these and other problems, and I believe the best way to do that in the situation for you all right now is by divesting that five percent as asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Eighty-four, Todd. Then Augustus, then Jay, then Emily.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Bender, Mayor Frye. Thank you, members of the council, for hearing from your constituents tonight. My name's Todd Bradlitch, and I live at nine oh eight Eighteenth Avenue Southeast in Councilmember Gordon's Ward, Ward Two. I'm here tonight to support the Make Homes Happen campaign to invest fifty million dollars into affordable housing. I'm grateful for the mayor's inclusion of forty-one million in his current budget proposal, and urge the council to continue to not only support that but future funding into that initiative over the course of the next ten years. The reason why this is important to me, I serve as the Associate Pastor at First Covenant Church in downtown Minneapolis here, where we partner with St. Stephen's Human Services in Hennepin County to provide shelter for fifty-eight individuals that are experiencing homelessness every night of the year. Many of those, most of those individuals are women, most of them are people of color, and daily I see the disparities played out in our community. And while there are many barriers that are facing some of my friends that stay in our shelter, one of the largest barriers is there's, there's just simply not enough housing. And so this one-time investment gets us started, but we really need a long-term investment in order to create enough sustainability for people to find a place to call home every night. Another hat that I wear as I sit is the chair of the downtown congregations to end homelessness, who we've spent, we've worked with many of you on some really great initiatives. Last year alone, we provided over two hundred thousand dollars in rental assistance so that we could keep people in their homes. We have a gathering of folks at four different congregations right now, Street Voices of Change, who spoke with Mayor Frye yesterday, actually. We're at the Hennepin County meeting, who every week come together, they meet at my church on Sundays, every week come together to share their experiences, to support one another, and to talk about the ways that they want to see homeless, the services and opportunities for people experiencing homelessness change. And what I, I want to just share about that experience, about what spending time with my friends who tonight are sleeping on trains, who are sleeping in tents, who are sleeping in shelter, is that they are a powerful community of folks who care for one another in ways that blow my mind as a pastor, all right? We need to help support them so that they can make a life and build the kind of community that we all want to see happen in our city. So I, I thank you for your commitment to this issue. I know many of you have worked many years on, on bringing us to this point where the city is about to invest in housing from our dollars, not from state or federal dollars, but from our dollars. I urge you to do it ongoing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Eighty-five, Augustus.
Hi, my name is Gus. I live at twenty-two oh nine Pleasant Avenue. Thanks, everybody, for staying up past my bedtime. I am a member of the Twin Cities Democratic Socialists of America, in case I didn't already look the part. I support divesting five percent from the police budget, although I think it will be wholly inefficient to combat these problems. I do not believe that the police are here to protect or serve. They are here primarily to criminalize the lives of those most marginalized by our society. To seriously protect and serve, we have to invest in housing, healthcare, education, raising the minimum wage. No amount of reform short of radical reimagination of what our police system looks like will be enough to combat these problems. The police are trained for armed conflict, and they should not be responding to problems of mental health or homelessness. I do not think that replacing any faces in the police department or even introducing training for implicit bias will be enough to combat the effects of what is, an institution that's foundation is rotten. And thank you. Nice. I made the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker eighty-six, Jay.
Hello, council. Thank you for having a speak for you tonight. My name is Jay Han Shim. I live in Councilmember Conno's Ward at Twenty-ninth and Fourteenth Avenue South, and I am here with Reclaim the Block. I support the demands of divestment of five percent from the police force and investment into community programs. I know that undertaking the budget is a pretty hefty job, and we've come up with some ideas for where that money can go. So, when we think about what real public safety looks like in our community, we know that we have an opioid problem. If you were to fund naloxone for all of the organizations that do safe needle exchanges and syringe exchanges and do training for naloxone, you could be supporting... and syringe exchanges and do training for naloxone, you could be supporting places like Just Us, Red Door, Minnesota Transgender Health Coalition, Lee's Rig Hub, Natives Against Heroin, and Southside Harm Reduction. If you're looking at making sure that the immigrants and refugees in this state are safe and have access to good legal opportunities, you can ensure that the $40,000 budget line that you have right now, in Mayor Frye's proposed budget, is increased, and that places like Volunteer Lawyers Network, The Advocates for Human Rights, and the Immigrant Law Center in Minnesota get more funding to be able to help folks in our community. You can also support places like the International Institute of Minnesota, which is one of our five organizations that brings refugees to the state. When we're looking at trans equity work and making sure that the trans and queer folks in our community are safe and feel a sense of safety, you can be supporting places like Family Tree Clinic, Lambda Legal, Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Transgender Health Coalition again, National Center for Transgender Equality, Outfront Minnesota, Reclaim, Youth Services Network. When we're talking about race and equity, we have wonderful groups in our city like Black Visions Collective that are doing some of that work and leading the way. We also know that domestic violence is a huge problem within our community and is one of the things that we look to when we think about what true safety means for folks. And with the defunding from United Way two years ago, we have a list of organizations. My list is too long to fit in my two minutes, but I have somebody coming up who's going to finish it off for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eighty-seven is Emily.
Hello, my name is Emily Scotto. I live at 2017 Pleasant Ave., Ward Ten, and I'm here to finish the list that Jay Henshaw started. So if we're looking at domestic violence with a $500,000 allocation, you could fund Cornerstone, the Anti-Violence Program in Outfront Minnesota, Asian Women's United House of Peace Minneapolis, the Aurora Center, the Bridge for Youth, Community University Healthcare Center, Communities Latinas Unidos en Servicio, CLUZ, Division of Indian Work, Domestic Abuse Project, The Family Partnership, Jacob Wetterling Resource Center, Jewish Family and Children's Service of Minneapolis, The Link Minneapolis Lutheran Social Services, Minneapolis American Indian Center, Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center, Sexual Violence Center Minneapolis, Tub Men, Voices of East African Women Minneapolis. If you're looking to fund employment and training organizations, you could fund American Indian OIC, Avivo, CLUZ again, Eastside Neighborhood Services, Emerge Community Development, Goodwill, Hired, Jewish Family and Children's Service of Minneapolis, Lutheran Social Services, Minneapolis Urban League, Pillsbury United Communities. And in terms of cooperative housing and affordable housing, which we've heard about so much tonight, you could fund Community Properties Managing Cooperative, Encalix Unidex Por Justicia, Latino Economic Development Center, Riverton Community Housing, the Don't Move Back Fight Back Coalition, the Make Homes Happen Coalition, Minneapolis Renters Coalition. You could also expand the Eviction Pilot, Representation Pilot Project. You could reinstate funding for the equity and inclusion tradings that happen in regulatory services that have helped so many tenants. You could increase staffing even more than is in the proposed budget for regulatory services, and you could expand funding for Home Line, Housing Link, Minnesota Legal Aid and Legal Services, and expand funding for the tenant hotline. You have an opportunity to be the progressive leaders we elected you to be. Make the choice with the full gravity of decision and fund our communities, not cops.
Thank you. Speaker eighty-eight, Sadie. A little light. Speaker eighty. Eighty-nine is Sophie.
Hi, I'm Sophie Gutarle, and I live at 1005 East 31st Street, and I'm here with Reclaim the Block to support their demand to divest 5% from the Minneapolis Police Department's budget. And just because every experience I or my friends have had with police has been at its best highly unhelpful and at its worst violent, and I'm clearly not alone in this from tonight's showing. So when I or my loved ones have been in crisis or in unsafe situations, we actively try to avoid police contact as much as possible, because so many people I know have experienced harm from police. That looks like everything from police not believing their experiences, to police looking for reasons to fine or arrest someone that have nothing to do with anyone's safety, to just blatant harassment, racism, transphobia. And we all know that police have killed people with full permission of the state. And when there are clearly so many, so many investments that took two people's testimonies to be making that could keep people housed and safe, and addressing real problems that cause crime in the first place, we don't need to be throwing more money at the police's already enormous budget. So I encourage you to divest 5% from MPD's budget and invest it in one of the, or many of the many orgs that have been named tonight. Thank you.
Speaker ninety, Joseph. Then it will be Jessica, Jane, and Honey.
Good evening, Mayor Frye and council members. My name is Joseph Ledley, and I live in the Fallon neighborhood. I've lived in Minneapolis for five years, and this year, I bought a house on the North Side. My first week in my home, I witnessed police harassment of a young man in my neighborhood. Maybe this is how MPD does community policing, but five squad cars to pick up my neighbor, and then keep him in a car for an hour, and then release him with no charges is an appalling failure in this effort, especially when I witnessed the same harassment less than one week later. In February, a friend of mine lost his housing the week of the Super Bowl. Over the next three months, as my friend continued receiving treatment for prostate cancer, I worked with him to secure affordable housing. Ultimately, first, I want to thank Councilmember Jenkins for the support offered by her office during this time. Thank you. Ultimately, with no options, he moved to Milwaukee. Housing is about more than a place to sleep. Housing influences compliance with medical care. Housing influences attendance in schools. An investment in affordable housing is an investment in the safety and security of our neighborhoods. Council members, I ask you to please reallocate 5% of the budget for MPD into the affordable housing that is direly needed for our children and families. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Speaker ninety-one, Jessica.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all, first of all, for being here, and thank you for being here, too. My name is Jessica Annabelle, and my address is 3542 Humboldt Avenue North. I'm here tonight as a vice president of a Minneapolis business and as a homeowner in Councilmember Cunningham's district. I would like to speak directly from these positions, in support of our city's business interests, the health of our city's communities, and in support of Reclaim the Block. Minneapolis has a horrific history of disadvantaging, of harming, a staggering percent of our city's residents. We have made national news in the last years for the worst income gaps between white residents and residents of color, the greatest disparities in homeownership, multiple murders by police officers. These facts are upsetting, I think, to all of us here, and these are the facts. And if I understand things correctly, it is your job to guide the positive development of our city. The decision facing you tonight should be a simple one for every one of you sitting here in front of me. Investing in affordable housing supports the safety and the dreams of everyone surrounding me here tonight. Investing in affordable housing supports the cultivation of our safe and diverse city. Affordable housing will support Minneapolis residents across all income levels. This is the foundational support that will help all of us. Meanwhile, our police department is failing, is harassing us, is killing us, is creating and exacerbating tension and fear with a tremendous cost. I mean, cost in terms of human life, cost in terms of the hopes of our children and teenagers, and especially our children of color, and cost in simple economic terms. These two are just facts. So I think we need to move past this absurdist argument between something that's dividing us, move in the direction that supports every single person here and in our city. We need to divest 5% at a minimum from Minneapolis Police Department and invest in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ninety-two, Jane. Jane Newman. Ninety-three is Honey.
Hello, good evening. My name is Honey. I live in Ward Twelve, Councilmember Johnson's Ward, 3617, 33rd Avenue South, and I am here with Reclaim the Block, as well as Black Visions Collective, and I'm in support of divesting 5% from the police and investing more in affordable housing. I'm going to be completely honest with you all. I don't want to be here. I'm incredibly disappointed that I have to present an argument as to why we should reallocate a small fraction of the police budget into meeting the basic needs of our community. And actually, I'd rather like to know why you all decided to run to be responsible for the well-being of thousands and thousands of people when you're not actually here for the people. After this long night, you all get to go home, a right not afforded to many of the people in our community. The fact that it's even being considered that we prioritize police over something as basic as making sure people have a roof over their heads is outrageous. You all should be outraged. I challenge you all to make the right choice. I challenge you all to be empathetic leaders, to be courageous, to be the leadership that we've been, to use the leadership that you've been granted by us to support the most marginalized. And unfortunately, I know that the powerful testimonies that have been made here tonight won't even be considered by some of you, but I challenge you to prove me wrong. And lastly, I'm also here in favor of the city providing $500,000 to Village Financial Cooperative. I believe that similar to investing in affordable housing, supporting the economic well-being of Black Minnesotans is another way we could provide safety in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dana Newhauser, and I live in the Bancroft neighborhood at 4012 14th Avenue South. I'm a minister at New City Church in Powderhorn, and I'm a part of both the Make Homes Happen and Reclaim the Block coalitions. When my husband and I were looking to buy a house 17 years ago, we followed our realtor's lead by researching statistics about the neighborhoods we were considering, crime reports, school options, the types of housing in the neighborhood, including the concentration of renters. All of that was supposed to tell us where to look for the most desirable place in which to make a home and raise a family. In the end, we ended up picking a house that all of the statistics said was wrong, but the community and its values were just right for us. The underlying assumptions of that search formula for the perfect house were faulty at best. Decades of racist housing practices and policing patterns, divestment in neighborhoods and schools, have shaped the city and have ongoing impacts. My friends, my kids' classmates, my neighbors and congregants are impacted directly, and we all live with those consequences. Racial disparities in housing, policing, education, health, et cetera, are not unrelated to one another and are certainly not going to go away on their own. It's time for intentional investment in building this city where all people can live and thrive. As a resident and as a minister in the community, I urge the council to take old and creative steps, to invest in solutions that are rooted in community and nurtured by those most impacted. I hope you will support the mayor's 2019 budget proposal to invest more in affordable housing, and I also ask the council to invest in the community organizations as outlined by Reclaim the Block, to build long-term safety that grows from taking care of one another as neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker ninety-five, Tyler.
Mayor Frye, council members. I'm Reverend Tyler Sit. I'm Ward Eight resident at Chicago and 38th, and pastor of New City Church, part of the Make Homes Happen Coalition. As a renter, I have seen firsthand how my neighbors are continually displaced from the neighborhood because of rising costs. One of my former neighbors, who was both disabled and an immigrant, was no longer able to stay in his home because of rising rent. He was a community champion who lived there for years, and we couldn't find him an affordable, safe place to move anywhere in Minneapolis. His story is one of dozens I encounter in my work. As a clergy person of a religion founded by a homeless, single-income family, I cannot say clearly enough that this is not a morally neutral issue. Our moment in history will be defined by our ability to make a green, safe city affordable enough to community champions like my neighbor. Please support Mayor Frye's proposed increased affordable housing funding as one step toward eventually a long-term dedicated source. Thank you from the people of New City Church.
Thank you. Speaker ninety-six is Nancy. Then Esther, then Nikki. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Reverend Nancy Nordbentz, Executive Director of Protect Minnesota, the only independent statewide gun violence prevention organization in Minnesota. We have an office at 1101 West Broadway in North Minneapolis and are committed to partnering with North Side organizations and investing in the North Side community to prevent gun violence. Protect Minnesota shares the goals of many speakers heard tonight, to prevent gun violence before it occurs and reduce the incarceration and the violent deaths of young African-American men. For that reason, I'm here tonight to ask the council not to divest 5% from the Minneapolis Police Department. Much of the community relations funding that would be cut is earmarked for vital youth violence prevention programs like Project Life, which are exactly the kind of alternative community-based partnerships we've heard called for tonight. Project Life is a vital group violence intervention partnership between the Minneapolis Public Health Department, the Minneapolis Police Department, gun violence survivors, and community organizations like Protect Minnesota. It involves identifying the young people most at risk of either shooting someone or being shot themselves, and intervening to provide them with the wraparound services, trauma-informed care, mentoring, and whatever else they need to feel safe putting down their guns. As reported recently in the Star Tribune, in less than two years in operation, Project Life is credited with a significant decrease in North Side gang-related shootings, including reduction by 40% of the number of gang members who are shot, and 50% of the number of gang shootings. Of its 100-plus participants, only seven have been charged with new gun crimes since enrolling in the program. Project Life is exactly the kind of police action we need in Minneapolis. We will never arrest our way out of gun violence. We need to invest in community-based programs. The positive involvement of law enforcement has been shown to be an essential component to successful group violence intervention programs in other cities. I urge you to consider what might be cut and what might be lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker ninety-seven, Esther. Go back if you're still here. Ninety-eight is Nikki. I don't see her either. Ninety-nine is school board member direct-elect Kim Caprini, who we would have happily let go first, but I just noticed her name on here. Speaker 100 is Dylan. Dylan Sebastian. 101 is Angelica Brown. 102, Cory. And we'll let everyone speak who I just named. Welcome. We're waiting for you. And if anyone else I just named is in the other room, we will welcome you up whenever you get here. So then after Malia speaks, it'll be, well, beyond Speaker 104.
Good evening. My name is Malia Connolly. I'm in Ward 13. I'm here to support and ask for your support for the race equity work. The main concern that I have is the original budget that was submitted was $160,000 for the work being done and being led by Joy. And when RECAK, the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee, started to do work this fall, we found that not having resources to make sure that all community members could engage in our work would really make it difficult for us to uphold the original intent of that work. So we're actually asking for additional funds on top of what the original ask was, a total of $200,000. of $200,000, to make sure that the way that we do this work makes it equitable for everyone to participate. The back page of the document that you have points out all of the specifics as far as the budget itself. If you don't have one, I'll make sure that you get it. And so I just want to make sure that we lift up and take seriously the mandate that has been given to us from the council, and we make sure that it's properly funded and supported. The other element is making sure that we continue to support, and I want to thank the council and the mayor for the support for Village Financial Cooperative. We are very excited to be able to get to work and to do the work that was mandated by the community. We're also interested in continuing the conversation for ongoing support as well. We're looking at an approval, hopefully, from the Minnesota Department of Commerce any day now, and we're very excited to make sure that we're providing equitable financial products and services to all Minneapolis residents. We hope that you would see the seriousness behind the ask and also see the connection between access to financial products and services and the ongoing racial equity work happening across the city. I see a lot of work being invested in a really well-implemented racial equity plan, and I know that you all have been putting in hours and hours into that work. When it comes to making sure that there's community engagement and making sure that we have pipelines for people, things that were lifted up were concerns like, you know, do we have the ability to provide translation services for community members that want to participate? Do we have the ability to make sure that families have access? If there's transportation boundaries or barriers, are we able to remove them? We know that there isn't typically a budget for these types of committees, but we believe that because the mandate is so serious, because the need is so great, that it also requires that we put capacity towards that work, and that we also make sure that we have the resources so that the process is equitable and everyone has the opportunity to build the policies that are going to make our city equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 104, I think it's Sharanti. Hi. This particular sheet is a little light.
Oh, yeah, you're good. I have a long name, too, so no biggie. Hey, y'all, my name's Sharanti Gannatilka. I'm a constituent in Ward 7. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Village Financial Cooperative and Reclaim the Block as well. There's a lot of really good initiatives that have come forward, really around this concept around invest-divest strategies. And so you've heard a lot of different community initiatives and organizations talk about things that have and have not worked for the increasing racial disparities that we see here today. So Minneapolis specifically has a huge, rich history of supporting diversity, but also carries a very dark past of segregation and systemic racism that has gone unchecked for way too long. Investing in an initiative like Village and other initiatives specifically around the Black community and helping to establish a financial institution where agency and financial access and power is, in my case, a form of reparations, as well as being able to repair the direct and passive harms done to our community over time. And I think when we hear things around not only renewable energy and fair housing, if you think of what does it look like for a community development financial institution to not only exist but have these same mission alignments, that's another entity that is able to do this type of financing and community development work that is so needed in community. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 105, Tara. Then we have Mark, Amy, Annalise.
Good evening. My name is Tara Durney, and I live at 4314 Pleasant Avenue South. I'm here with Reclaim the Block, and I'm a member of AFSCME. I also support the Village Financial Cooperative. I support divesting 5% of the police budget to fund our communities. It is important to me that all of my neighbors have their basic needs met. In my job as a social worker, I receive calls from people who need help finding affordable housing or who need to figure out some way to keep the housing that they already have that has become too expensive. I'm heartbroken to have so little to offer these callers in the way of resources. I request that at least 5% of the police budget be shifted to fund affordable housing and community-led safety initiatives. I also support MARAC and funding for municipal IDs. Thank you.
Thank you. 107 is Amy, welcome.
Good evening, public servants. I am Amy Blumentine from Powderhorn. And like you, I've been listening to all this passionate testimony tonight, and I'm sure that we all would really want to fund the great needs that have been identified. And I get to bring you the great news that actually, the citizens of Minneapolis give an abundance of wealth in taxes, more than enough to satisfy the needs identified at these hearings. We have the capacity to address these important needs, but unfortunately, our federal tax money goes to war-making. As a Lutheran, I want you to know that my church nationally, the ELCA, along with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, urges municipal governments to raise awareness among citizens of what we're missing due to war spending. Worse, the more spent on war, the more cities have to spend to address the harm caused to veterans and their families and also to refugees. The sad news is that at least $866 million was extracted from Minneapolis to pay for the Defense Department in 2017. It's worse than that because that figure doesn't include the cost of post-9/11 wars, which are mostly on borrowed money. This is estimated at around $6 trillion by 2019. And projected spending is even worse. Upgrading the nuclear weapons, for instance, is estimated to cost $10 million an hour for 10 years. Imagine what we could do for human flourishing with that money: housing, healthcare. We invite the city to follow the Conference of Mayors resolution that recommends public hearings where department heads could tell us what they could do with even some of our share, say 10% of that funding. Outrageously, 10% is a low estimate of the amount the military budget lost to fraud and waste. They just failed their first audit in 28 years. The public deserves to know how making war is hurting our human flourishing. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. 108, Annalise, welcome.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor Frye. My name is Annalise Brandeltanis. I live at 34th and Bloomington. I'm in Councilmember Conos Ward. I have a lot to say on this topic, but first I just wanted to note there was someone here earlier talking about the possibility of a funding cut for a particular department if we were to divest from the police. The police have been sending around some emails suggesting that they'll cut officers and other scare tactics in the community, so before you use that as an excuse to not, that like they're going to cut these programs, maybe like check in with them about their intimidation practices. So what I'm going to talk to you today, we've been talking a lot about the future. We're talking about the 2040 Plan. We're talking about the 2019 budget. And Minneapolis has this image of a really progressive future ahead. I've talked to a lot of you this last month about what's going on in your particular wards. I know you believe in your community. I know you want to see Minneapolis be a just, vibrant, community-driven place. I work as an environmental educator at Theodore Wirth Park in the Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden. I talk a lot about the past and about the legacy of racism and environmental racism in Minnesota, in Minneapolis. So some of you know that, some of you see that in your wards. You know that things like the opioid crisis, things like lack of affordable housing, that these are not new, that these are historically entrenched. Some of you might say that your wards are pretty white or pretty wealthy, that you don't have safety problems, or your residents wouldn't get behind a divestment from the police. What did redlining do for you in your ward? What did the genocide of Native Americans do for that neighborhood to make it white? So I encourage you to be inspired, to fund things like Village Financial Trust, to fund the lock zone, to put $1 million into opioid prevention. We can be a transformative force for the future instead of policing the boundaries of who belongs in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 110 is Mindy. 111, Hoseas. 112, Alyssa, welcome.
My name is Hoseas Arcadia. I previously lived in Mrs. Canos District. Sorry, forgot. This is my first time appearing before court thing, whatever. Anyways, before I became a Minneapolis resident, I served as a volunteer firefighter for three years. I worked closely with police in the area that I served, and I experienced firsthand the overt and subtle racism of police departments. More recently, after moving to Minneapolis, this Thanksgiving, my friends and I diffused a domestic fight. When the cops showed up, the Vietnamese man that was assaulted by his partner showed nothing but fear. He was not feeling reassured by the police presence. When I was at Thurman Blevin's demonstration at the precinct, after he was murdered, a cop hid behind his dorm blinds and flipped me off. I don't think more money, guns, and riot gear are going to reform a group that already behaves like an organized crime syndicate. 48% of police in America have committed domestic violence, and yet we're talking about cutting domestic violence prevention to 25 grand. Okay? So I'm here unabashedly as an anarchist and a communist, and the ideas of policing in community are inherently opposite to one another. Okay? Rather than taking an active part in your community, hiring more cops is the waiving of your responsibilities as a member of your community while replacing that same responsibility with violence as a shortcut. Driving the rent prices up to make neighborhoods like Lake Street inaccessible to minority and low-income families goes part and parcel with making their existence illegal through heavy policing. They are more than good enough than just to be paid attention to when they're serving you from behind a kitchen counter. By rewarding landlordism and police brutality with increasing financial incentives, you are funding the oppression and violence performed by class traitors. And 5% is a pittance when measured against the violence enacted by police. It's greater pittance when compared to the 11% cut to city services and workers' comp and pensions that's also being proposed. My last words are to you directly, Mayor Frye. On the street, your nickname is Gentry Frye, if you're not aware of this. You can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 112, Alyssa.
Good evening, Mayor Frye, Council President Bender, and council members and committed residents of Minneapolis. Thank you all for still being here. I am here in support of the Stable Homes, Stable Schools Initiative. I work for the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and I'm also a parent of a child in Minneapolis Public Schools. When I learned about the levels of homelessness in the schools, I found them really disturbing that we're allowing this to take place and saying that it's okay for 1 in 10 children to be homeless or highly mobile. And in some of the schools that were selected by the school district to participate in this initiative, 1 in 5 children are homeless. So this is an opportunity to make a difference and do something that will really give people a chance here. One of the goals of the program is to prevent homeless children from becoming homeless adults. So all children in Minneapolis deserve a chance in their life, and thank you for your support of this initiative.
Thank you. 113, Hamza, then Roxanne, Alyssa, and Molly.
Hello, Mayor Frye, council members. My name is Hamza. I am here with Make Homes Happen. I am a community organizer for the African Career Education and Resources Incorporated. I work in housing justice. Earlier this year in Minneapolis, police had made 47 marijuana-related arrests. 46 of those arrests were made on Black people. In Minneapolis, Black people are arrested 11 times higher than white arrests. Black youth are 17 times more likely to be arrested for truancy or loitering than their white counterparts, youth of color who are disparagingly homeless in our city. These staggering disparages are not due to disparages in crimes committed. In fact, white youth are statistically proven to be much more likely to use drugs than Black youth. But these disparages are due to police practices. Criminal sociology has a theory on labeling, which states that criminality grows from the labeling of individuals as criminals. It should come as no surprise that we have the highest achievement gap between Black and white students when we see our Black youth being treated as criminals in this city. As a community organizer working on housing justice, many of my constituents are forced into sharing units as small as one bedrooms with others because they can afford the rent, as well as the fact that they are often denied for having nonviolent petty drug charges on their record. I work in neighborhoods that, as early as the late 1950s, had been divided by city plans as Negro slums. We have historically had the economic means to subjugate people of color, have had the economic means to fund initiatives such as the New Deal. We ensure housing for white residents throughout history, but when it's time to find housing for our Black community members, our community members of color, it becomes a question. As a Black man, I have witnessed the misconduct of police personally and within my community. I have heard people argue that this is the case for the federal government. I'm here to remind you all that the federal government supported the aforementioned New Deal that denied the privileges of housing for Black citizens. The same federal government who has, as even more recent than the 1930s, ruled in a Supreme Court case that racial profiling is a justified police practice because of the likelihood that a Mexican-looking individual would be an illegal immigrant. We are looking to our local government for the solution to these crises that have intersected on so many levels. To ameliorate the injustices of the housing crisis in the city, historic segregative policy, as well as the misconduct of police, I urge the council to divest from Minneapolis Police Department and invest in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 114, Roxanne. 115, Alyssa. Then Molly Spencer James.
That was a long wait. So I'll try to be real quick. One thing that we noticed in this room tonight, you don't have representation from the North Side. You had a couple of people come up here and talk. When you're asking to divest 5% from the Minneapolis Police Department, you need to hear the voices of the North Side. Jeremiah knows that, Philip Cunningham knows that, and the rest of his council, including the mayor, knows that. I do want to thank the mayor for his contribution into affordable housing. I just want to make sure that it's affordable for everybody. What this group of people, and I do thank everybody who put their time in and came and spoke, but what this group of people is asking you to do is rob Peter to pay Paul. That doesn't make sense to me. Every one of you sitting up there right now work with groups in your community who work with who? The police. They work in partnerships. Why? Because they want to do the work in partnerships, because they want to build relationships with your police department, because you have a chief who's taken the department into that direction. You have groups like Project Life, she was up here. You have GBI. You have Mad Dads. You have Mother's Love. You have other groups in the community that's working with the police. Now, my mind is getting old here, so just give me a second. Everybody else took my extra time. Sorry, y'all, I'm sick. Sorry. Cheap phone. Okay. Now, this is what I said. Everybody that came up here told you they came up here to reclaim the block. We don't know what block they're talking about reclaiming, but I can tell you this, they're not reclaiming the ones in North Minneapolis unless they really, really ready to get rid of the gun violence, the dead bodies, those who have been shot, beat, robbed, strangled, I'm sorry, stabbed, carjacked. So when they come up here and tell you how they're going to deal with that, then you let me know. I haven't seen any of these people out on the numerous shootings and stabbings and homicides in North Minneapolis. I think this council's opening a can of worms. It would be twenty-plus agencies down here beating your doors down for this fictitious five percent. Those cuts will affect the community-police relationships. What'll cut first, and this is not a threat, this is what I believe, CPS, GBI, community engagement, POW, beat officers. You do have community members who actually like the police, in case you forgot, and we're building and working and having strong relationships with our police department. So I'll make this suggestion because I did talk to Chief Aradondo. That's what I do. I asked that you go and sit down with him and ask him his idea. I asked that, are you Andrew Jenkins, because you are a strong supporter of the community and Chief Aradondo? I asked that of you, Warsami, South Somali on the city council, because it's our communities that get affected. I asked that of you, Jeremiah Ellison-Bay. I asked that of Cunningham, and I asked that of Alondra Kano. Because when everybody get done talking up here that don't look like me, that five percent will hurt our community. So I'm asking you. I'm asking you. Go sit down with Aradondo and ask him his plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker 116, Molly. Then Spencer, James, Elise.
Hi, council members and Mayor Frye. I know it's been a long night, and it's been a long night for everyone sitting here as well. My name is Molly Glasgow, and I'm here today as a Minneapolis business owner and community member. My business, Point Acupressure, is located on Hennepin and 32nd. My work centers around supporting people as they heal from physical and emotional trauma. But I cannot work with people on an individual basis to address the root of this trauma in their bodies if I don't also work to address the root of this trauma in Minneapolis. Racism, scarcity, and power are reoccurring themes in this work and in our city. The word "safety" and its uses can be weighted and are often used to further the agenda of retaining control for those in positions of power. But true safety, however, reflects freedom to exist as who we are, stability or the ability to have our basic needs met, and the agency to act and make decisions in our best interest. With that meaning, establishing safety allows us to address and heal the roots of trauma. We have been fed a narrative of public safety with an emphasis on restriction and control. I invite you to reframe the meaning of safety with us and into community safety that values freedom, stability, and agency. With that in mind, it becomes clear that increasing police presence does not make our communities safer. Our communities are safer when people not only have what they need, but feel the freedom to live their lives without constant surveillance, intimidation, and criminalization. Police were established to control indigenous communities, surveil and arrest black people, and protect the interests of the wealthy. We cannot separate police from this history. We can't separate police from a history of slave-catching and of genocide. What we can do is acknowledge that, that history, reject the ways that modern-day policing continues that history, and make concrete economic decisions that begin to repair the historical damage that policing and its roots in white supremacy have caused. Minneapolis faces a number of challenges. I know that you know that. And the solution for them is relatively simple. If Minneapolis is concerned with people living outside, we need to invest in housing. If you're concerned in racism, you need to stop investing in racist structures. And we also need to continually make choices that prioritize the mental, emotional, and physical health of residents. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. 117, Spencer. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jake Verdenax. I'm here to speak on behalf of my younger brother who had to leave to take his daughter home. I live at 2401 Chicago Avenue in the Phillips neighborhood, but I was born and raised in northeast Minneapolis. I'm here to support the goals of reclaim the block, to divest five percent from the police budget, invest in long-term solutions. My first cognizant memory as a child is the Minneapolis police forcing themselves into our home and assaulting my grandmother. And my first political memory was watching the Minneapolis police shoot Fong Lee in the back, plant a gun on his body, and have no accountability. And I'm looking at every single one of you, and I'm confused as to how an organization could drug people without their consent, literally murder people, and you offered them a budget increase? I think your statements about racial equity are hollow, and I think you should be embarrassed to show up in Minneapolis Public Schools, Mayor Frye. I'd also like to say, Kevin Reich, as a white man from northeast Minneapolis, you have a choice today to be a collaborator with fascism or to be about democracy. I'm looking at you dead in your eyes. Voting for an increase and failing to vote for a divestment from the police, you're continuing the legacy, the shameful legacy of our neighborhood to support violence against black people and to pit the working class against each other. The police show up to evict us from our houses. And I'm looking at you. That's going to be your legacy. This is going to be all of your legacies. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, James. 110, sorry, 118, James. 119, Elise. Okay, tired.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Elise. I live at 34th and Colfax, and I am here in solidarity with Reclaim the Block. In the six years that I have lived in Minneapolis, the MPD have proved skilled at one thing: violence. Since my time, the MPD has murdered countless members of the community under the guise of protection and service. The MPD has forcefully injected people with ketamine without consent, beaten individuals to a pulp, shot blindly into a car full of children, shot and killed animals without cause, consistently and continuously pulls guns on children of color, and show that they are incapable of responding to situations in a way that is helpful and does not perpetuate violence. Adding more money and police to the MPD will only increase their ability to harm and perpetrate violence and will only continue their purpose of protecting and serving affluent white communities. Police are not members of our community. Less than eight percent of the MPD reside within city limits. They are not members of my community when they show up and kill members of my community. They do not live next door to me. They drive in from Elk River and shoot members of my community. Divest from police, invest in community organizations like Village Financial Trust that are actually going to work to keep people safe. Invest in affordable housing, food, clean water, air. Fund communities, not cops.
Thank you. Speaker 120, Lindsay. Then we'll do 122, Assad, then Emily, Rachel, Molly.
Thank you, Council President Bender, Mayor Frye, and the rest of the council members. My name is Assad Alwaid. I'm with New American Development Center, offices at 115 East Lake Street. New American Development Center is a community-based organization that works with the East African and Somali community in terms of economic development and affordable housing. I'm here tonight in support of Make Homes Happen Coalition. Affordable housing, especially large-size families' affordable housing, is one of the greatest challenges that low-income immigrants and historically underrepresented communities are facing today. Lack of large-size affordable housing made many families and children in a very tough situation. It affects health and well-being of the communities. It affects education gap for the low-income children. It contributes many families to live in a very unstable, shaky, unsustainable situations. Especially the immigrants and Somali community have large-size families historically. There is a family that's fifteen, fourteen, or eleven or twelve people who could not able to buy a home and could not able to find affordable housing, appropriate affordable housing place to live in. I support this funding, affordable funding in the budget, and I thank Mayor Frye for bringing this into the budget, and thank you all.
Thank you. 123, Emily. Emily Rifkin. 124, Rachel. 125 is Molly. Hi. Thank you.
Molly needed to head out for time reasons. Gave me her number. My name's Heather McCann Young. I live near Whittier Elementary. This, I've been dreading coming to this meeting all day, pretty much as soon as I heard about it, but I knew that I had to. I knew that I had to because I spent, I'm kind of unique in that I'm a white girl that's terrified of cops. I spent much of my formative years being physically and verbally, and I got seven types of shit beat out of me by a still-ranking member of the Des Moines Police Department. After much therapy and growth and a long time and moving to a different state and coming out and just generally growing up and caring for myself, I got through it. I am no longer a victim of domestic violence. I'm a survivor of it. I'm, okay, I just have to ask you to please divest five percent from the Minneapolis Police Department. Frankly, the fact that you're only being asked to divest five percent is a kindness that the Minneapolis Police Department does not deserve. Something like forty percent of cops beat their wives and beat their kids. Do you, like, you don't know what, like, how that works with your brain, the kind of terror, the economic impact that domestic violence has in this country that it has in Minneapolis? If the Minneapolis Police Department wants money, then they should probably fire the third of their staff that goes home and breaks the laws that they're supposed to be enforcing. So divest more than five percent, but at least five percent, because the idea that as a homeowner, my tax dollars should go to wife beaters is insane. I wish I could be calmer about this. I have, I have links for, like, various research if you want to talk about numbers, but it's, it's two out of five that beat their spouses, that beat their kids, that beat their partners. And I, you can't, you can't tell me that they deserve more money. I want to hire a cop to shovel my driveway because I don't trust them. I certainly don't want them with a gun in our schools. They don't need any more money. They need less. They need to clean up their shop. If any other business with such a profound failure rate is insane. I'm sorry, I hoped to keep as calm as possible, and I really did. And I, I do manage my mental health very well, and I've got a nice, I've got a nice home. I'm middle-class. I've got a good wife. I've got a very spoiled dog. I'm, I'm a lot more lucky than most people who've been through what I've been through. But I still have nightmares, and it's been the better part of twenty years. And my brother that experienced the same things joined the Navy at a very profound time, and between what we went through and his experiences in Iraq, he would be better off dead in the desert than how he is now, serving life for perpetuating the cycle of violence against a significant other. The cops don't need more money. They need much, much less. And when you give them more money without rooting out the abusers, you're insulting all the hard work and growth that I put into becoming a decent citizen, just becoming normal, becoming somebody that wants to have a kid someday, somebody that runs an art business, somebody that, like, just gardens and mows the lawn and walks her dog. You're telling the average citizen who's been through this, which...
Thank you.
Just, thank you. I'm sorry. That's...
I'm your council member, so if you want to email me anything to share with the rest of the council, I'm happy to. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Speaker 126, Non Kululeko. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Non Kululeko. I'm here in support of Reclaim the Block and Village Financial Cooperative. As many members have said here before, community members and organizers, it's imperative that you all divest five percent from the MPD's budget and invest that in community-led organizations and community-run entities that work to build wealth in our communities and keep wealth and are not extractive. I'm also here to say that we should invest more in affordable housing because that literally is a human right. And I've also been thinking in terms of village and all the other cooperative work that's happening, and where the money is going, are you all aware or know of your community members that are working to, like, build wealth and build structures in the communities? Are you all aware of them? Are you all supporting those people that are doing that? Is, where is the money going? I'm asking you to listen to everyone that's spoken tonight, everyone that's elected you to sit here in front of us tonight, and I'm urging you to listen. The people have spoken. Are you listening?
Thank you. Speaker 127, Maddie. We also have Lila, Jonathan, July, and Wintana.
Good evening, council. Maddie had to go home early. My name is August. I live on Broadway and Adams Street. I'm not here with any particular organization, but I am definitely in support of Reclaim the Block. And I've heard a lot of stories tonight of people scared to testify, scared to come here, and anxious to speak in front of you all, and myself included. This is my first time in City Hall, a quaint little place. I walked in earlier tonight and saw a statue of what I thought was Poseidon in the hall here. I went back down earlier to check on the plaque, and it said Mississippi, and I just thought it funny that someone would give an Ojibwe name to an obviously Greek statue like that. But coming into this place of democracy and being greeted by the face of a god, I thought, the face of terror and fear and authority, to speak to y'all who work for us, I can't think of any more apt a metaphor for how we've used the police to rule with fear. There was a man arrested outside of my house about a month ago. I'd seen him walking around. Didn't seem like he had anywhere to go, but wasn't bugging anybody. And it took five of Minneapolis finest to search him and arrest him. One to bend him over the car, another to pat him down, two to stand watch, and another to stand with his hand on his gun and wait for an opportunity. The thing is, this man wasn't afraid. This man was looking Poseidon in the face, and he was cussing him out. He was angry. And that's the thing with ruling with fear is that eventually people don't get afraid, they get angry. I'll let y'all take that for what it is.
Thank you. Speaker 128, Lila. Then Jonathan, July, Wintana. And if you haven't signed in and want to speak, please do.
Hi, my name is Leela Serene, and I live in the Powderhorn neighborhood in south Minneapolis. And I'm here tonight with Reclaim the Block. As I've been sitting here, I've been hearing a lot of powerful stories and arguments that support the belief that cops do not make people safe, and putting more money into policing doesn't make people more safe. The work that I do is healing work, and what's, one thing that I experience in the work that I do is that one of the most human things is to try something over and over again that isn't working and to just keep trying. And what I see is that so often why that happens, why we try the same thing over and over again, even though it isn't working, is because it's really scary to try something new, even when something new holds the potential for so much transformation and change and healing. And so I just wanted to offer, in addition to all the stories and arguments that I've made tonight, the perspective that significantly defunding police and investing in community-based safety practices is a thing that we have... safety practices is a thing that we haven't tried yet. And so put it out there for the possibility that there could be something in a strategy that we haven't tried yet, that we couldn't realize how powerful it could be unless we try it. And so in the spirit of trying something new, I wanted to invite everyone in this room to join our voices together in a song, and I especially want to extend this invitation to everyone sitting up here to join our voices together right now. And so I'm going to start off, and please, if you know the song, join in with me, and if not, as soon as you feel ready to pick it up, please sing with me. I am not going alone. I carry my people in my bones. I am not going alone. And if you listen, you can hear them in my soul. I am not going alone. I carry my people right here in my bones. I am not going alone. And if you listen, you can hear them in my soul. One more time. I am not going alone. I carry my people in my bones. I am not going alone. And if you listen, you can hear them in my soul. I lied, one more time. I am not, yes, going alone. I carry my people in my bones. I am not going alone. And if you listen, you can hear them in my soul.
Thank you. We just have a few more people signed up. Jonathan is next, Speaker 129. I hope you have a good act to follow this.
I was going to say I'm going to be anti-climactic, but regardless. My name is Jonathan Stegall, and I live at 38th Street and Third Avenue in Ward 8. I'm with Reclaim the Block and with the Center for Prophetic Imagination. And as I was thinking about what to say this time, the thing that sat on my mind was domestic violence. And, well, certainly as a society, we need to teach men to stop being violent. We also bear the responsibility of providing better options than policing provides for people who are victims and survivors. So if a woman, for example, is a victim, we leave her with no good choices. If she feels like she has to stay, she may lose her security if her partner is incarcerated, she may lose her housing if the police come to her place too many times, she may lose her children, she may lose everything. And if she, if she wants to leave, she may have no good places to go because they have no funding, they're losing their United Way funding, or she may have nowhere to take her children for those kind of reasons. And then if, if she feels that she has no other options other than what other parts of our society would call self-defense, or other things that are not violent, but ways of coping, we will incarcerate her, punish her for being a survivor. 2017 report from the Vera Institute indicates that, among other things, 86% of women in jail were victims of sexual violence before they arrived there. That 77% of them experienced partner violence before they arrived there, and that 60% experienced caregiver violence before they arrived there, because we've already heard some of that. And that's one reason I support the demands like those of Reclaim the Block. We have a responsibility as a society to provide better choices than those provided by policing, by incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 130, July. And then 131, Wintana. And then if anyone else wants to speak, please sign in. Thank you, welcome.
Councilpeople mayor, my name is July. I've lived for a while in Ward 6, and I'm on the process of moving to Ward 9. I want to start with an acknowledgement of the land, that this building is built into the foundation connecting us and our bodies to Dakota land. I want to bring in my ancestors. It might be 6,000 years since there was a good person in my lineage, somebody that embodied love and justice, and maybe there was somebody more recently, but I bring in the work to find those connections. I've lived in Minneapolis for 10 years. I think I was here for about 28 or 29 days by the time I got, hmm, tackled into the sidewalk on Lake Street and stomped out, and then hospitalized. Since that incident in 2009, I can't even tell you how many times I had some terrible stuff go on with the police. Somebody was speaking about their process of trying to lodge a complaint. I had police fail to write on a report of a traumatic incident that I experienced from a motor vehicle, that there was a motor vehicle involved, and instead wrote on this report that I was simply lying in the street when they had a full report that told them that I had in fact been thrown off of a motor vehicle. So I went to the emergency room, and they didn't do a CAT scan, so they let me go in the morning. And then I went back a couple of days later with a headache, and it turns out that I had a skull fracture that started here, and it went all the way around the back of my head to here, and it was a centimeter away from brain damage. And so I tried to call and file a complaint against this police officer, and I got a lieutenant or a sergeant or somebody yelling at me that I had no business having complaints. And I just want to name the incredible white supremacy that we move through in Minneapolis, and the ways that neighborhoods, the very few neighborhoods in South Minneapolis that have historically been safe spaces for Black and Brown bodies, are being rapidly gentrified. 24th and Chicago, down on 22nd and East Lake, and you know it's coming from across the highway over to Lake and Chicago now. And so I just really want to say that 5% divestment from the police is a very, very, very small step. We need public, city-owned housing, we need deeply affordable housing, we need subsidized housing, we need the one-bedroom for 700, we need the two-bedroom for 1,000. We don't need a one-bedroom for $1,600 on Lake Street in the hood. That's insane. Who's going to come and stay on Lake and Chicago? What are we doing? What is this legacy? Who are we moving? And how many times are we going to move them before we cut it out, before we change this legacy? Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker 131, Wintana.
Hi, you guys. Hi, my name is Wintana Melikane. I am a former community organizer. I now am a business owner. I have a business in Andrew Jenkins Ward, and also in Steve Fletcher's Ward, and then a restaurant in St. Paul. So I came here today in support of the 5% decrease to the police budget. You've heard lots of amazing stories. The thing that I wanted to touch on is that you're now hearing rumors about what may be cut, and the first things we're hearing from the police department are community programs that they want to cut. I think it is very telling that the first thing they see on the chopping block are the direct programs that the community needs the most, and I think that we should take some time to take that money away. If you don't want it, if you think it's the first thing you want to throw out, then let's let the community run it, let's take those resources, invest it into some community programming, and let's design some things together. So I just wanted to touch on that. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the RECAC program. Joy Marsh Stevens has been, like, truly a blessing to work with, has helped so many community members through her programming, and is just a huge asset to the city, so I would love to see more, more funding for her programs. Oh, I also wanted to talk about, sorry, I got a list, y'all. But the other thing I wanted to talk about is the municipal IDs. I strongly support it, I think it's great. I think that it can be very dangerous for Black immigrants, and that we should take the data practices very serious. And I know that each of you has said that we're not going to pass anything until we get those data practices right. I just want to, like, double down on that concept, that we aren't investing money to something that could be very dangerous for highly vulnerable immigrant communities. I also wanted to talk about something that I haven't heard anyone else talk about, but is that in Minneapolis, businesses are required to hire off-duty officers that wear their uniforms. We need an end to that practice. Police officers should not be able to work for companies and corporations off-duty in their uniforms, paid for by everyday citizens. I think that we need to find better ways to run these programs and better ways to track the data, who's hired, when, how much are they being paid. And one thing I wanted to also talk about is that, while we have communities sitting here begging for a 5% decrease, I think another way to solve this problem in the future is to expand on some of the work City Councilmember Glidden had worked on with participatory budgets. I think that we should be consistently setting money aside for community to decide what happens. And I, many, I know my time is up, but like, many of you are community members, you guys were elected from a bunch of grassroots organizers that worked really hard to select you and appoint you, and not appoint you, but get you here, and I really hope that you guys decide to stay with us, because if not, we will replace you again in four years. So I really hope you guys do the right thing, because I don't, I want to keep running businesses, I don't want to keep coming back to City Hall. So, thank you, all of you.
Thank you. That was the last speaker who had signed in. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Last call.
You want to speak?
Yes, of course.
Hi, my name is Puma. I'm here with Black Visions Collective and Reclaim the Block. Squad gang. I've never been to a City Hall meeting, but I have stood eye-to-eye with people like Jeremiah, like, uh, Helandra, right? That's your name, your first name? And, kinda you, Jacob, and you, Ms. Jenkins. But yeah, like, I, I have three brothers, all Black, and I just, every day, like, kind of swallow my fears that I have for them about not only living in Minnesota, but living in America, and just the reality of what the Black experience is like for us, is that, yes, they're, like, cliche, but yeah, there's always a target on our heads, no matter what clothes we're wearing, how we talk, where we come from, none of that. So, any interaction, I was just sitting back there trying to, like, file through interactions with the police, and they've, they've been so traumatic that I don't like to remember them. It was really hard to, like, get a tangible story that I could tell about how, you know, ways I've seen the police act. I just know that I don't feel safe when they're around. As a former North Sider too, I know there was a comment about, "Ain't no North Siders in the room." That's a lie. I don't feel safe when they're around. My 68-year-old grandmother doesn't feel safe when they're around. My 23-year-old brother doesn't, my nine-year-old brother doesn't, my 13-year-old brother doesn't, my 39-year-old mother doesn't. So my whole family tree does not mess with the police, and they all reside over in North Minneapolis. And what I also would say is that I live on Lake and Pillsbury, and I live in a very affordable studio, honestly. But a vegan restaurant just popped up, like, two blocks away, so I'm a little scared about where this affordable housing thing will take us. And I know, like, your campaign was so strongly held on affordable housing. Why are you, what, what, like, where is it? Like, what are you really giving to the people? And you walk around so calm, and so, um, just grounded, you look so grounded, but also you look so nervous. It's almost like you're shaking in your boots every time, every time, especially when Black Visions Collective pops up, because you know we will come for you. So I just, oh, what's your, you can say something, if you like.
I'm happy to have you.
You're happy to have me. Mm-hmm. Cute, I'm happy that you sit there and you're listening to all the people tonight. But, yeah, I guess my, my bone that I've wanted to pick is because I've talked to people well before, like, Betsy Hyer, just got to be eye-to-eye with her, and, and say how I feel about her. I guess I just haven't been able to tell you how I feel about you, but I really hope that you, you, the charisma and the friendly attitude that you have, or even like, when you spoke to Molly in the video, like, that, all of that, like, really bring that to the people, stop being a perfect package, who wants to sell himself to gain political power but does not actually want to uplift the people in his community, like that nice condo that you stay in over northeast, that whole, that's why your name is Jacob Gentrify, whoever said it. It's a great name for you because that's what you're doing to our city, period. So, yeah, I just ask that you, you try to be human. You, you, you go into your heart space and realize that you're not dealing with numbers, okay, and placement and, and all that, you're dealing with humans, people with real lives, lives just like you, people who love their mother just like you love your brother, right? As much as we want to protect our families, I mean, as much as you would like to protect your family at all costs, so will we. And so, yeah, I just ask that you do this job with humanity, with empathy, and with, be, be genuine, genuine in space.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Final call. I will close the public hearing. I'll be very brief, but we do want to share the details of what is coming next for the budget process. I really want to thank everyone who came, and if someone had to leave and would like to submit their comments in written form, please do. And I do want to also just note that our first committee meeting of the day started at 9:30 a.m., and I just want to give my very deepest appreciation to our staff who are here at the end of a 14-hour workday or more, and we hope that that is the exception, not the rule, in the city of Minneapolis, for the people who dedicate their time and their service to our community. And there's many department heads, I know, and staff watching this as well, so thank you, thank you, thank you to our staff. And we'll be back here tomorrow morning at 10:00. So with, with that, I want to recognize Councilmember Palmisano, who's the Chair of our Budget Committee, to let us know what's happening next, and then we will be adjourned after that.
Thank you, Madam President. The Budget Committee will conduct a markup session on the recommended budget this Friday, November 30th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in this chamber. At that time, council members will have the opportunity to get responses or follow-up information on questions raised during the departmental hearings that we completed earlier this year, as well as the chance to bring forward any amendments or staff directions. That markup session is open to the public, it will be broadcast on the city's TV, and also streamed live from our city website. The final budget package, then, which will include the base recommended budget submitted by Mayor Frye, together with any amendments from council members during Friday's markup, will then be submitted to the full City Council for a final public hearing scheduled for next Wednesday, December 5th, beginning at 6:05 in this chamber, just like tonight. Following the conclusion of that public hearing, the full council will take final action on the budget for 2019. Madam President, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my thanks to Mayor Frye and to all colleagues for your input and your work and your commitment to the 2019 budget. We've continued to improve the budget process each year, which is a reflection of our, our efforts, as much as it speaks to the work of our professional finance staff, led by our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Ruff. As the Budget Committee Chair, I've been especially grateful for the expert assistance of our Budget Director, Micah Intermill, and his team of analysts. They've helped us to shepherd this process and put our decisions in context for what is truly one of our most important duties. So many thanks to all of our staff. That's all I have.
Thank you. So with that, we will take a motion to adjourn to the next meeting on Wednesday, December 5th, beginning at 6:05 p.m. for the second and final public hearing on the recommended 2019 budget, which will be followed by formal action to adopt the budget. Is there a motion?
So mo.
On approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. That carries, we are adjourned. Thank you again so much. Have a great night.